Erin, is that everybody?
I... One more, and I think we're all set. Good. DeeDee, let me know whenever you're ready, and I'll start taking attendance.
All right, I'm ready.
Okay. Deirdre Rudolph?
Here.
Barbara Higbee?
Here.
Anthony Mullen?
Here.
Suzanne Spellen?
Here.
Sarah Wengert?
Yes.
Okay, all commissioners are in attendance, and we have a call.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We've got quite a few items on today's agenda. We're going to start with old business. Our first case tonight is PLPC 2020-0024, which is 515 First Street. It's a change of use. Erin, would you like to discuss it at all, or introduce it? Or would you like me to just read from the agenda?
I... Yeah, I mean, I can. Actually, I think the agenda has a typo on there. This is being presented by the Capital District Women Veterans Program. They're represented this evening by Dr. Christine Remm. The board saw this last month. It's a change of use from a single-family residence to a community residential facility. I believe the only reason it's on this evening, and the commission was unable to take action last month, was the... It was incorrectly advertised as being converted to a two-family or a multifamily residence, but it's actually a community residential facility. And if Dr. Remm is on, she can go into more detail with exactly how many beds are being created, this change of use.
I'm here.
Okay, great.
I'm not showing up, but I can speak.
Thank you.
The community residence has four bedrooms, and one bedroom has two adult beds. And so we have... We can accommodate five residents in four rooms. And it's a community residence where they share a kitchen, share a living room. There's two bathrooms, one full bath on the first floor and a three-quarter bath on the second floor. Any questions?
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak about this, before I turn it over to the commissioners?
Deirdre, do you want to... Do you want to take a vote to open the public hearing?
Sure. What... Yeah, why do we make a... Will somebody make a motion to open the public hearing tonight for this project?
This is Sarah Wengert. I make a motion to open this hearing for public comment.
I second it. Suzanne Spellen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, public hearing is open.
All right, is there anyone here tonight that would like to talk on... About this project? I don't see anybody or hear anybody, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
Who made the motion to close? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Barbara.
Suzanne, you seconded?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
All right, now I'd ask, any commissioners have any comment or input they'd like to share tonight on this, before we move forward? All right, I'd ask if there is a motion to approve the site plan, or the change of use, I'm sorry, as presented?
This is Anthony.
All right, so, did you get that, Erin?
I did. I believe that was Anthony making the motion, and then Sarah seconding.
I second, yes.
Deirdre Rudolph?
Yes.
Sarah Wengert?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen? Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Anthony Mullen?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So moving on, we're on to our second case, PLPC 2019-0004. Again, under old business. This is 438 Fourth Street. It's a site plan review and secret determination. Is this... Is the applicant here for this tonight, Erin?
DeeDee, I believe the applicant would like to postpone. They've... They have a few other items that they need to address before the commission could act on that proposal. So I believe their plan is to get that additional information into the city and be on next month's agenda. So the commission could table that, or could open the public hearing. It's up to you.
Erin, this is... Erin and DeeDee, this is Sarah Wengert. I'd like to ask you a question. I have a comment to make based on the materials submitted to date. Is this the appropriate forum in which to do that, or should that wait a month?
I would prefer, if the commission has any comments, that that be discussed this evening.
Okay.
Everyone, this is Andy Brick. I would just add that, Sarah, if you wanted to be a part of the record of the public hearing, whatever you raised this month, you may want to just repeat next month, so it becomes a part of the transcript of the public hearing itself, since it doesn't sound like we'll be doing the public hearing tonight.
In my opinion, that is not... I don't think it's necessary, thank you. My comment is a request that the applicant, by... Is, at the time of the hearing, provide all color samples of exterior architectural materials. My comment.
Sarah, just to be clear, that's of... You want color samples of all of them, physical samples, or...
Physical samples, right, and this is challenging. I don't think we've done this yet, virtually. Well, I have, in my work, but I think if there... I would appreciate it if there's a way that the applicant could somehow display the actual color materials, whether it's by way of photographing a color board or something that shows us what the drawings represent, material-wise.
So, to clarify, physical samples, but the submission could be digital?
Yes.
All right.
That's... Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else that we want to discuss? We're going to table this tonight, right?
Yes.
Is... Barbara, do you have something?
I just want to table it. I move we table this.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Deirdre?
Aye.
Sarah? Sarah Wengert, how do you vote?
Yes, aye, yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Anthony Mullen?
Yes.
Motion to table carries, 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to our third case this evening, under old business, is PLPC 2020-0020, 3 East Industrial Parkway. We... The applicant came, I believe it was, was it two meetings ago? And we asked them to come back. So I would ask, do we want to open this again for a hearing? Or do we want... Was the previous hearing adequate?
That's completely up to the commission.
Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, Christopher Longo here, from Empire Engineering. And I'm... The applicant is also here, John Kerr from City Produce.
All right, so why don't we have a motion to open the hearing?
This is Sarah Wengert. I make a motion to open the hearing for public comment.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open.
Okay, I would ask the applicant to provide us with an update of the plans that you've submitted?
Yes, so I believe that Christopher Longo, again, here. I believe the board has the updated plans, which show an expansion of some of the pavement area. And we have since, at the beginning of this week, resubmitted those plans to Erin and the city after some additional investigation of what is necessary here. And Erin, if it's available, I could try and share my screen here with everybody. I'll put a...
Yeah, Chris, do I need to enable that for you, or?
Yes, if you could.
Okay.
I can't see.
I think there's one more second here.
Can you request it? I don't see how...
It says host is disabled participants screen sharing.
My apologies, let me...
Right. So I can do a little bit of explanation while he's...
Yeah, it says it's allowed on my end. Let me share my... Let me pull it up on my screen, and I can share it. Just bear with me a moment, please.
So yeah, if you have that color presentation playing there.
Oh, I don't. I don't think I have that one readily available, but I can share the PDF here.
Okay, here we go. It just popped in as a possibility. All right, can everybody see this, the screen now? Okay, so to update the board on what's changed since the last meeting, there is, as I mentioned, an expansion of the pavement area to accommodate the truck turning radius and additional parking and storage of tractor-trailers. Now, to explain the process, or what this facility is, it's a wholesale warehouse and food wholesale warehouse and distribution center. So there is a good amount of truck traffic here, obviously, on Industrial Parkway, heavily traveled, truck-traveled location. And what the applicant's proposing is to install a new entrance route along the north side or the back of the building, and that would be both trucks and for vehicle parking, mainly for loading vehicles. Those trucks would then loop around the building and enter the loading dock area by driving forward and then backing in to three loading docks that are existing, and then a fourth proposed loading dock. There would also be tractor-trailer vehicle storage along the east side, which, as you see in the aerial photo, kind of has some old... It used to have trucks and trailers parked in that location. Now, that's not technically paved. It's a little bit of a gravelish, overgrown area now, but they are proposing to pave that area and keep it, you know, have a fresh look for all the parking. And then exiting that would be the truck exit-only area. And that would also... It's wide enough to provide enough turning radius for that worst-case scenario loading dock that's proposed, and then also wide enough for a truck to be able to pull off and, you know, do their paperwork and timesheets and whatnot along the side, so that another truck has the ability to get out past them. There is a... And there was a comment from the board to try to counter any increase in pavement as much as possible. So there is a reduction in pavement in the front area by removing those six parking spaces at the end of the existing parking on the southwest side of the lot. There also is an existing concrete pad along the rear of the building, which a portion would be removed, and the other asphalt pavement area accommodated for it. Push the pavement off of the building a little bit, provide more green space there, as well as provide a proper turning radius around the rear of that building. And also, last meeting, there was a commentary about the drainage and stormwater flows. So we are under an acre of disturbance here, so there is not any stormwater DEC SWIP requirements. However, there is the City of Troy combined sewer overflow. So in speaking with Chris Whelan at the city, we provided the design and accommodation for some settling areas, and those are on the north side and then on the east side of the proposed pavement areas. The other southern area would be all drained to existing catch spaces. So the new pavement that's being created, we are mitigating with swales, which lead to settling area, which would provide infiltration as much as possible prior to discharge from the site. And so that's pretty much the rundown, unless John wanted to add any, or if the board members have any questions.
Okay, so I think what we'll do is we will once again open have a motion to open a hearing for public comment, if there is a motion.
That motion's been made. I believe the public hearing is open.
So is there anyone from the public that has any comment regarding this proposal? Nobody's here? Nope, I can't hear or see. All right. Now we'll close the hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the hearing.
Is there a second?
I second.
Who seconded?
Barbara.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is closed.
Okay, and at this time, I might open the commissioners to ask questions of the applicant regarding this submission. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
DeeDee, could I make a comment?
Yes, of course.
I appreciate all of Chris's coordination here with the city on this project, although I am noticing one minor discrepancy between the plan and our code. If this is being classified as an assembly, packaging, storage, and distribution facility, the parking required is 1.25 spaces per employee. I don't know if the math comes out differently or not on that.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, are there... You said there's 40 employees. Are there 40 employees at one time? Or how... What are the shifts? Are there... Because your parking count was based on 40 employees. Are there 40 employees there at one time, is what I'm asking?
Did you want me to answer that, Chris?
Go ahead, John, if you could.
Hi, everybody. My name's John Karat. I own Capital City Produce. At one... We did have 40 employees at one time, and then we got hurt with the COVID pandemic due to the closure of a lot of restaurants. So right now, we're hovering at about 20 employees, hoping to grow if everything gets back to normal. And we do have two shifts. Each shift, we probably have between 15 and 20 employees at one time.
Okay, so by my math, and Chris, you can check me on that, but if there's 20 employees max shift, that would be 25 parking spaces required. So it isn't an issue that there isn't enough parking. I just know that the commission had comments about the extent of pavement on the site previously. Certainly, the justification is there for truck movements. That's been made clear, but I just wanted to throw that out there. If, you know, you don't need to have 35 spaces per code. You're certainly allowed to propose that, but if you wanted to reduce that, you could.
I will, if I could, say something.
Yes.
You go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not used to this, all this Zoom meetings. The advantage of where we are is the bus route. A lot of my employees take the bus, which is why this is an attractive location, comparable to where I am also. So I think, you know, like Chris said, he wanted to minimize or maximize the space, but minimize the usage, which is going to be, like you said, very difficult for the vehicles that we have to accommodate our business. So I guess that's a... That's a good thing.
I'll also kind of re-ask that, too, and maybe John can weigh in here. I'm pretty sure I heard, Erin, you were saying that they could reduce the number of parking spaces. However, I kind of heard John with some optimism that certainly they'd be back to 40 employees again. So I guess, John, are you comfortable with the 35 parking spaces? That would be 20 on the north side of the building, more predominant for employees, and then 15 on the south side. Would you be open to reducing any more of those? It sounds like maybe the board would also be open to that, if you would... If you would be comfortable with what your growth plans are.
I think it's... I'm pretty comfortable with the way it sits right now. With your plan. Did everybody hear me? Am I... I'm here.
Oh, DeeDee, you're muted.
Let's go in and out. So what would be the number, if... Erin, what's the... What is it, 1.25?
I have a suggestion, if I can make a suggestion here.
Yes.
So the parking requirement is 25. This plan demonstrates how 35 spaces could be on the site. If the commission could approve this with the 10 spaces to the west being banked and being constructed at the applicant's discretion. So, you know, the... If you wanted to make that a stipulation.
DeeDee, this is Sarah Wengert.
Yes.
I follow what Erin has described, that no additional parking... There is the potential stipulation that no additional parking spaces be provided on the west portion of the site, that only the drive would be provided at the initial phase of this project, and that in the future, if needed, those additional parking spaces could be constructed. And so my question would be, does that stipulation allow the applicant to add those additional spaces at will, or with subsequent approval from the planning commission?
Got the question for Andy.
It would be within the board's discretion to require it either way as a condition, but I would submit that if they would have to come back for another meeting to reactivate them and get them paved, it would be more in the applicant's interest at this point to say, well, we'd just like to pave them now. If you want to keep it green, but give them the discretion when they need them, you could also coordinate it through the city engineer's office, rather than coming back to the board for a full-blown hearing back on a board agenda.
Yes, I would recommend that it goes through the city engineer's office for review and approval. And then I'd also...
So that addresses actually two issues with the plan. The parking count and the fact that only one handicap space is being shown currently, which if we bring the count down to 25 is acceptable, but at 35, two would be required. I know that's just a striping thing, you have the parking, but the plan as it stands would meet code. Chris, do you agree with that?
I do. I see what you're commenting on and mentioning. I did want to mention, though, a little bit different than the previous comment about what would be constructed now. It would be only, I think the contemplation is one bank of the new parking on the north side. The first bank would be necessary to get to 25 spaces, 15 on the south and 10 on the north. So I guess, as I understand it, that consideration or the question to the applicant is, would they be open to banking the 10 spaces, not all 20 of them?
Thank you for that clarification. And, and is, so then, forgive me, is north to the right on this plan? Because I can't see the north arrow on the screen.
To the left.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that seems reasonable to me.
And I also think there should be a condition that the applicant receives approval from the city DPU regarding utilities and stormwater. I know you said that you were in process of working with them.
Okay, so I just want to read through what I have here for the record. The applicant has submitted revised plans. I believe they were dated the 18th. Is that the date on this plan?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The, we had no public comment. This is a type 2 action under Seeker.
Aaron?
And there's the following stipulation.
Yeah. Hey, Aaron, it's Andy. If I could stop you there, due to the size of the building, it would be an unlisted action?
The building's existing, though. It's a reuse of an existing structure.
But it's technically a change of use, isn't it? Or are you viewing it as the same use as a warehouse?
I was viewing it as the same use.
Okay, that's fine then. Then it's just a rehab. Never mind.
Yep. And then there's the following stipulations. That the applicant obtain a building permit within six months of this of an approval. The 10 spaces on the west be banked. And that the owner coordinate with the city engineer's office in order to pave those spaces in the future. And the third stipulation, that DPU approval be obtained for the project.
All right, I just need one clarification. I thought we said it was the north parking spaces, not the west. Is that, which, I thought it was the north.
I apologize. Yeah, I'm turned around. I'm saying they are the north spaces. Thank you.
All right, any other comments, any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't understand what you mean by banked. The, the north parking.
So I believe what we're talking about is not constructing those 10 spaces at this time. That you would have approval to construct those 10 spaces upon what you've, you know, as you need it. Right now, you don't have the employee number that requires that amount of spacing. So as your employee number increases, you would get approval from the city engineer to pave those 10 spaces, is what I'm understanding. The ones against the building? Is that, are those the ones? The north side, far left of what we're looking at. You need that from, okay.
If, if we were, okay, I understand.
Yeah, so, and I can explain for you a little bit too, right, John, that would still be a two-way travel lane, 24-foot wide there for the driveway and the truck traffic into the rear, just the 10 off along the property line. And now banked meaning still be constructed, but with the city engineer's approval.
I got you.
If I might make one other comment. I'm seeing it now on the plan. The sidewalks along East Industrial Parkway are not shown. Is the intent to keep those sidewalks continuous through the three curb cuts that are shown? I believe they're there today, so.
Yes, and that, so since this survey was done, the sidewalks have been constructed. And what we've done is we've added a note to this plan to verify the final layout and the dimensions. At look, it hasn't been surveyed, but at look, it did appear that that sidewalk may even be able to stay in the location it is without needing to be altered for the driveway. The other two driveways were already there and would, and the sidewalk accommodates them. So those would, would not need to be altered, except for a couple of panels there to widen the asphalt on the south side.
Okay, so, so just to be clear, the curb cuts will have a continuous sidewalk from, from end to end?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any required work in that area, it would be a replacement in kind of the sidewalk.
Okay, excellent.
Any other questions? Is everybody looking at every good? All right, so we need a motion to approve this with those three conditions. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the submitted site plan with the three stipulations. One, that the bank of 10 parking spaces at the far north of the site be banked. And if the applicant chooses to construct them in the future, they shall confer with the city of Troy Engineering and meet their approval. The second stipulation is that the applicant shall communicate with the city of Troy DPU for all utility modification. And the third stip, for the third stipulation, Dee Dee, please clarify for me what that third is.
The applicant shall submit an application for a building permit within six months of the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you very much. The applicant shall submit a building permit application within six months of this approval.
Second, this is Anthony.
Do you want to take the vote or do you want me?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I'll take the vote. Dee Dee?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Barbara? Barbara, I couldn't hear you, sorry. Still can't hear you.
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
The motion passes. Five zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, our fourth case this evening under Old Business is PLPC 2020 0026. Location is 2377 Burdette Avenue. It's a site plan review. Proposing to create off-street parking for residential tenants. Let me, Aaron, do, is there any other background information that we need before we start?
Um, no, I don't, I don't think so. I think that the applicant submitted some revised plans, which the commissioners have reviewed, that made some adjustments based on comments they received at the last month's meeting.
All right, is the applicant for this case here? So is there anyone here representing 2377 Burdette Avenue? All right, I do not hear anybody. So tell me if I'm missing that. Is there anyone from the public who came tonight wanting to make a comment regarding this project?
Dee Dee, I believe you have to open the public hearing.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any, okay, I'll, is there a motion to open the public hearing to receive comments regarding 2377 Burdette Avenue?
This is Sarah Wengert. I make a motion to open the public hearing for public comment.
I second.
Suzanne seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing's open.
All right, so again, I'll request, is there anyone here tonight that would wish to give comment regarding this proposal? All right, so we will close. Hello? Somebody talking? All right, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Dee Dee, it's Andy. I would propose that the applicant isn't here, and we don't know why, on that you may want to leave the public hearing open to give them an opportunity to speak. So just leave it open and adjourn it to next month's meeting.
Okay, well, we'll do. So is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing till the next month's meeting?
This is Sarah Wengert. I will make a motion to adjourn the public hearing for public comment till the following meeting.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five. Andy, we don't need a motion to table, correct? That, that motion tables this as well?
Correct, because if you table it, then you need a motion to remove it from the table and restart the public hearing. By adjourning the public hearing, it puts it over the next month. It's easier.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll proceed on to the next project. So our final project under Old Business is PLPC 2020 0011, King's Landing 2, Site Plan Review and Seeker. So I see that we're, we have some plans being put up for this. Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, Cosmo Marchionne with the BDC Group. Tonight I have with me Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering and George Olson from Olson Architects. And this is our second presentation, formal presentation to the board. And what we've done in this time between the last presentation is we've taken the comments from the board and from the public. We visited some of the colors and the materials for the exterior of the building. We've also were able to redefine our unit mixes. We're going to have 59 apartments and 16 three-bedrooms and 43 two-bedrooms. And we've also submitted to Clough Harbor and Associate our plans, our civil engineering plans. And Nick, Nick from Advanced Engineering addressed all the, all their comments, and we'll present some of those to you this evening. And, and we've also been working with Chris. We submitted sewer and stormwater reports to Chris Whelan from Department of DPU. And, and also been in touch with the fire department to arrange a meeting. And we've had some conversations offline on a telephone, but we haven't able yet to arrange a meeting. The fire chief did give us some direction, which we've implemented on the current plan. So with that, I'm going to give you, Nick Costa is going to go over the site plan and comment on this, on go over some of the Clough Harbor Associates' comments.
Thank you, Cosmo. Cosmo, if you could bring up the site plans rendering the, the, the one before this, Cosmo, yeah, thank you.
There's a little delay, Nick, so I'm like, seconds.
Well, that's what happens when you're in the Caribbean.
That's right.
So this is the aerial photo of the, of the proposed project. It's located right here as my pointer shows. And this is the phase two of the, of the the improvements. The phase one was the construction of this King's Landing one, as we refer to it. And this is the King's Landing two. And what I want to show, because this is an aerial photo, is, is the other improvements are being contemplated, which is the improvements here at this parking lot. And the last time we were in front of the board, we heard some public comments, and also the board commented that there was no lighting, there was no landscaping, you know, it was just presented in a very, very sketch face type of plan. So what we've done is we've added the landscaping, we've added some islands, we've also added lighting to this plan. We've also added the access, the ingress and egress, you know, from, from the parking lot. And so this is additional parking that's being provided to help meet some of the, of the needs of the neighborhood. And, and this is also being done by the applicant. If we can go back to the site plan, Cosmo, can you move to the next sheet? Thank you. So this is, this has incorporated some of the comments from, you know, from Clough Harbor. And that is, it shows where we're paving. It has highlighted by hatches. This gray hatching is all the new paving that's being done on the site. It also shows a sidewalk that was suggested and which we've implemented, and also the hatching that was done for distinguishing the sidewalk surfaces. And also some of the grass areas and the landscaping that's, that's also been contemplated. There is also comments with regards to traffic flow. And I want to point out, right here, there's a stop bar that was, that's been placed. So the traffic flow is going to be one-way. It's going to come in off of King Street and, and access, you know, here. And then there's going to be, the door is right here for the garage. There will be a light, a traffic light that will control, the traffic light will control the traffic so that this vehicle will stop here. So it will allow the maneuvering of the vehicle coming in to be able to get here, you know, to get through here. Also exiting here, it will, you will have a choice to either exit out to Fifth Avenue or to exit back out to Laundry Place and go out Laundry Place out to New Federal Street. But, but there won't be two-way traffic in here. This is all being done as one-way. If you want to get to the lower level, you still have to use King Street, Laundry Place, and then come in, you know, at this level and go down to the ramp that brings you to the lower level parking. Or come in to the ramp up, which brings you to the upper level. The other thing we've modified based on the comments that we received from Clough Harbor is that we've placed the dumpster enclosure to be right here. So it will make it easy for the truck to come in, pick up the garbage and then go out on Fifth Avenue. So the maneuvering is, is, is a lot better and a lot, it facilitates the maneuvering much, you know, better than was previously. There, there is parking on the lower level. There's 34 parking spaces provided on the lower level. And there's 29 parking spaces provided on the upper level and five additional parking spaces out on Laundry Place for a total of 63 parking spaces. And that has, that has been corrected in the project narrative. Obviously, the project narrative was done based on the, on the previous layout. The, again, the sidewalks are all being replaced. You know, there, there is existing sidewalks here, but by the time this building is built, it, it will have new, new sidewalks and also sidewalks along Federal Street. Cosmo, can you go to the traffic floor, please? So this, you know, we pulled out the, this sheet from the set that, that we had to show how we're, we've responded to the traffic, traffic, traffic flow comments from, from Clough Harbor. So as I said before, it will be one way in and then you either have the option to go up to the upper level or go down to the lower level. And if you are coming out of the lower level, the only, your only way out is to go towards federal, you know, Federal Street, to go south, move south towards Federal Street. There won't be a movement to come and make a right, you know, that, that takes care of some of the comments that Clough Harbor had with regards to, you know, traffic flow conflicts. And, and again, when you're coming out of the upper level, you, you do have a, a choice of going either towards Fifth Avenue or going towards Laundry Place and then go out to Federal Street. So it, it does, it does give you options, you know, to move, you know, easily on, on the site. Laundry Place has historically been a one-way traffic pattern and, and it's being kept to that historical traffic pattern. So if you want, Cosmo, if you, if you want to move through the, the rest of the, and the board would like for, for me to keep going and reviewing the, the revisions that have been made to address the Clough Harbor comments, we can go through the, the entire set of drawings. That's up to the board.
Yes, I think we'd like to see what, what it is, what revisions you've made.
Sure, okay. So we'll keep going. I gave you kind of a summary and, and over, over, overall of what was done. As I said, this is the existing condition, so if we can go to the, the next sheet, thanks, Cosmo. So there was a suggestion made to, to have a sidewalk that would join, you know, from here, from, from these parking spaces out to the street. And, and that, that's been added. There, there was a, a comment with regards to the dumpster, which was shown at this location. And due to the maneuvering that would need to be done by the truck to get that, it was relocated to this, this location here. There was a comment made about how the maneuvering of vehicles would be in conflict and how would, they would be managed. And, and we've added the stop bar and also a light that would control this vehicle from leaving while there's another vehicle coming in. So while, while the vehicle is coming in, this vehicle won't be able to leave. It will have to stop here and wait for that vehicle to come in and then they can go either left or right out to Fifth Avenue.
Nick?
Yes.
Can I interrupt one second?
Sure.
I thought we discussed when they were leaving the first floor, they were only going to go, go out on Fifth, because we only have ones.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're, you're correct. Cosmo, thanks for correct, you know, you're absolutely right. The, the, the idea is to keep this one way, so.
Correct.
Yes, when, when the vehicles from the first level leave, it will be going out to Fifth Avenue. That's, that's correct. If you can go to the grading plan, please. So again, we've modified the grading plan to add a lot more detail, you know, spot elevations to see how this, you know, these areas function. There, there was also a comment about water, stormwater runoff going down to the lower level, which naturally, naturally would do that because we're at a higher level here, water will tend to go to the lower level. What we've done is we've added a trench, an interceptor trench that will pick up any surface drainage and, and take it into the large stormwater pipe that was rerouted during the King's Landing Phase One project. There was a, there was a comment made about distinguishing the, you know, where the various areas are green and landscaped. And that was done on the drawings. There's labels that say, you know, these areas are lawn or grass. And then there's landscaping trees being added and also landscaping trees being added along Fifth Avenue. There was a comment made with regards to the water and sewer volumes generated from the project. There was a, an engineer's report that was prepared and submitted to Chris, Chris Whelan and also to the city engineer's office, Aaron Vera. There was, there was a comment made about signage. That signage is shown on the plans. All the signage will conform to the MUTCD, the manual, and, and here's a list of the, the signs that are being proposed and they, they do conform to the MUTCD latest edition. I, I think that, that was, those are pretty much all the comments that I'm, I'm reading through here. They, they, you know, obviously there's, you know, details, you know, that I won't bore you with the details. I think we, we did get a, a comment from the city with regards to the type of bike rack that we're using and, and we've modified that to the circular one. Yeah, that's it, right here. Okay, well, that, that's pretty much what I have in response to the Clough Harbor comments, Cosmo. So if there's, if you want to continue the presentation for George, that's fine.
Okay, George.
Okay, good evening. What we did was we went back after our last conversation. I think there were quite a few comments about the darker blue and the darker red colors. And we tweaked some areas with a fiber cement board and what we're showing you tonight is a lighter color scheme. And as we went back and started to look around, I think the dark blue was more or less uncharacteristic as a, as a field color. It is evident in some areas as accent colors and things. So we basically continued and these are the views from the corner from Federal Street looking down Fifth Avenue. And we lighten the colors up. So we're using more of a sandstone color or the lighter, which looks on the screen, more of a cream color. We're still continuing the banding across, which kind of breaks up the floors lower level to the upper level. And then our bump outs, which are similar to the Oriole windows and bay windows and things. We're using more of a, a greenish or slate green color. So we lightened up the colors quite a bit. You can just keep going down the street, Cosmo. Where you can see that it isn't much, and we did, we had more of a, the, the brick was always intended to be more of a reddish brick, kind of like a Troy, more of the Troy historic brick. And it more, it read more of a brown brick in the last renderings. We've gone back and gone through some colors and we got to be more representative of what the traditional brick that we were looking at. Keep going. And this is a view from the church courtyard. We still have the green wall and we still have those window openings at the second floor. And this is a closer view. So you can see the last time we had that as a dark blue, almost a black dark blue. And we've lightened it up considerably and I, I think it's better for the church court as a lighter color. Keep going. And what we tried to do is we went back to the site and we took, we took some photographs, but we decided to just use Google Earth since these are photographs that are in the public domain. And we've superimposed the building on the lot line. There were some concerns last time how close the building is to the street. And I think these images show that the building is fairly consistent with what's on not only Fifth Avenue, but on a lot of the other residential streets in the, in the city. And this is a view from down near the corner, closer to Federal. This is a view looking south toward Federal Street. And you can see, you'll see on the next photograph, but if you look on the right here, we, that building is right on, if you're looking at Nick Cus, that's where the building is. So, and it is about 10 feet, even though it, it doesn't look it because of the photograph. Go to the next one, Cosmo. And you can see the relationship pretty much of what's across the street and what we're proposing for our building. See some areas, you've got lighter colors coming down to the sidewalk, some areas where the darker, the brownstone or the brick comes down. And that's what we're looking at here. And you can see, so I, I think there was confusion last time when we talked about the width of the sidewalk and what was in, but from our property line to the curb, it's about 10, a little over 10 feet, which is consistent with what's on the other side of the street. Go ahead, or Cosmo. And then these were the renderings that we showed before. And I don't think we've tweaked too much on these. The massing stayed the same. The materials are still the brick, fiber cement board. And not much has changed there. We still have, like I said, the living, the green wall on the north side that faces the church. And we did play with and tweak and actually develop the floor plans a little bit more. And I can just show you a quick overview. One thing, go back to that other, the lower level. And Nick had this up there, but as you can, what I wanted to do, point out when Nick was talking about the parking is there is no intercommunication between the lower level parking and the first, the level that's at street level. So I think we had 33 cars at street level. And so there will not be 68 cars coming out toward Fifth Avenue. At the most, there will be 33 and Cosmo can talk about that. A lot of the kids are students and they ride, a lot of the tenants might be students. They ride the bus. So I think that significantly cuts the traffic down and we have no communication between the two levels of parking.
In fact, we have 25 on that first level, I'm sorry, 24 and five on the outside and 39 on.
Oh, that's right.
So, so we've, you know, there's even less.
Yep.
And by restricting the traffic going out, just going out to Fifth and, and not having anybody come, you know, not having this traffic from the lower level go north on Laundry, we reduced the amount of potential cars that could come out on Fifth. So I think we nailed that down. We have a great plan, I think, on the traffic.
You want to show the floor plans?
Sure.
And I can let Cosmo talk a little bit more about this, but we've gone through and we've, I guess we've moved into design development here and these units are, they do represent, you know, more or less concrete sizes and numbers of bedrooms and things. And we end up with a total of 59 units and predominantly they're two-bedroom units. Before we had a mixture, I think we had some more three-bedroom units in there, but this is more or less the final count and the final distribution of two and three-bedroom units. You can see there's 43 two-bedroom units and only 16.
Correct.
So I think that's.
So what we try, yeah, what we tried to do is, you know, given, given the, the new COVID era, which, you know, it is what it is, you know, we, we feel that the two bedrooms you're going to, would be more marketable. And, and that's why we focused a lot on the two bedrooms. We also focused on carving out a large area for amenity space. With, this, this may look small on plan, but it's actually very, very large. From one side to the other, we're talking about perhaps 35 to, to 40 feet and 20 foot deep. So they're very large, every floor has them. And, and it's, it's to promote, it's, you know, it's to take your, your normal floor plan where we would have the three foot apart or the four feet apart between chairs or between table areas. Now we're going to obviously do six and eight feet apart. And, and that'll, that'll provide a safe environment where, where folks could congregate at a socially distanced. Yeah, socially distanced. So, so that's what we have to share with you tonight. We, we, we do, you know, ask for the board's comments. We, we do ask for the board to, if they could close the public hearing for this evening and, and move towards a, you know, move towards secret resolution for the next, for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'll ask, is there a motion to open the public hearing to receive public comments on this proposal? Is there a motion?
DeeDee, this is Sarah Wengert. I make a motion to open the hearing to public comment for this project.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? The public hearing's open.
Is the public allowed to speak now?
All right, can everybody hear me? My internet's getting a little funny.
Yes.
Yes, DeeDee. And yes, public is allowed to speak. State your name and address, please.
I don't know who you're talking to.
Why, why don't we, isn't there, is there a raise?
I'm back.
Is there a raise your hand feature?
Lost in Zoom.
Is, is there a raise your hand feature in Zoom?
Yes.
All right, why don't we, DeeDee, why don't we, why don't we do it that way? All right?
That sounds good. So I would ask that you clearly state, state your full name and address before speaking and that we try to limit. and that we try to limit the comments to, uh, three to four minutes. And, uh, you know, try to, uh, not, not repeat comments, but we are looking for good substantive comments on this project. So who would like to go first?
If I may, first, uh, it's, it's Angie. Just for, for people who aren't familiar with Zoom, if you click on the participants on the bottom of your screen, you will see a list come up and on the bottom right of that list, there's a button to raise hand. If you, if you want to speak, you push that button and then Aaron, who's hosting the meeting, will see your hand up on his screen and will know to call on you.
All right, thank you. So Aaron, I'll let you, uh,
Yeah, yep. Uh, I, I believe it, is it Dreya?
Yes, uh, my name is Dreya Lanza. I live at 2227 Fifth Avenue, uh, here in Troy. Um, uh, first of all, I, I just have a quick question about what are the notification requirements for a public hearing or for, uh, for these meetings? That's actually a question to, for the board. And, uh, and let me just tell you why, because, um, nobody in the neighborhood got a notification that this meeting was happening. So we were wondering what the requirements are for notification.
So I, I'll let, I'll let Andy chime in if I, if I get this wrong, but, but the, the requirements for public notice are only for the initial meeting. Subsequent meetings, once the initial meeting has been tabled, the agenda items can be heard at any subsequent meetings.
Okay, without, without notification. Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Um, uh, as before, the, the concerns are about, uh, a, a couple of things. One is about traffic and parking. I see that they have at least reduced the amount of parking that, uh, I'm sorry, reduced the amount of traffic that would be emptying onto Fifth Avenue from King's Landing Two. It sounds better to me than having a wholesale exit onto Fifth Avenue. I think it would be better if, and, and in previous meetings, they've said, oh, it's no problem to have everybody exit onto Federal. So I don't know why, if it's no problem to have everything exit onto Federal, it doesn't just happen like that. Why, you know, they keep on coming back to exiting onto Fifth Avenue. It's a small street, parking on both sides. When large, uh, vehicles like trucks, buses, eventually I'm sure we're going to have school buses coming back, garbage trucks, when they go down the street, they block the entire street. And we get aggravated drivers piling up behind them. And so especially since they said that the garbage truck would exit onto Fifth Avenue and you can only go one way on Fifth, so it means you're going right through the neighborhood. That is a problem, this exit onto Fifth Avenue. I also noticed that the plan for the parking lot at the corner of Jacob and Fifth also exits onto Fifth Avenue. That exiting onto Fifth Avenue is a problem. At the moment, it only exits onto, uh, Jacob. So why the plan is to add another exit onto Fifth Avenue, I don't know. Going out onto Fifth is definitely not what the neighborhood wants. I do like the colors. They're much improved, um, and, and the general look of the building. I had noted once before that buildings that are about 10 foot from the curb, they're good for a two or three-story. A five-story building, only 10 foot from the curb, you end up with this canyon effect. Not so bad on the Federal Avenue side where there's a, a lot of space between the street and the front of the building, but on the Fifth Avenue side, it's definitely very canyon-ish. And the last thing is, uh, and I don't know that this question has ever been answered, whether the tenants of this building, if they're going to have to pay for parking, it means that they, many of them may quite possibly opt for parking on the street. At the moment, we already have too much congestion with the parking on the street. So if the residents are going to be looking for parking on Fifth Avenue, because they won't look for parking on Federal, it'll be Fifth, on either side of Fifth, although crossing Federal is difficult. So they will probably look for parking on Fifth and that's going to further make the congestion worse. So having some way, if there is a parking space, say for every apartment or something like that, included in the rent, then it would mean that the tenants would not be looking for parking space in the neighborhood. And I have submitted other comments at other times and I'll let other people speak. Thank you.
Hello, this is Trudy Hanmer. I live at 2142 Fifth Avenue, directly across from the proposed building. And I just want to second everything that Dreya just said.
Uh, DeeDee, I don't see any other hands that are raised.
Hey, Aaron, can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you, James. Yes.
Hey, this is James Rath. I'm a, I'm an assistant planner for the city of Troy. I staff the Complete Streets Advisory Board. I just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions. If the applicant could explain kind of the difference between King's Landing Two and King's Landing One, um, now that we have something to go off of, I don't know if they touched upon that in earlier meetings. That, I think that'd be helpful for the neighborhood to understand the canyoning effect and potentially how that, the buildings will interact with the public space. And then explaining a little bit why, um, there's a need to, for the, for the different traffic flows. I mean, I, I'm not familiar with those types of traffic controls that Nick had mentioned. So if there are any other like local examples that you could point to, that would be very helpful, for the city and the public to understand those. That's all.
Not sure, Ja- uh, James, what do you mean, the differences, the differences in materials or?
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I'll, um, I'll kind of compliment you guys on King's Landing One. I think the project looks great. You know, this, this project looks quite different and I just, I just kind of trying to understand if, if the rendering is the reason for that looking so different or if it actually will look quite different from King's Landing One.
Yeah, it don't look different from King's Landing One, and that was on purpose. And George could highlight the reasons why this, the, you know, the, the different architecture that, that was employed or, or that was cont- is contemplated on this project as opposed to King's One. So go ahead, George, if you want to talk a little bit about the differences.
Sure. I think one of the, uh, we looked at King's One, first of all, was kind of a different site, but we also looked at those facades, if you notice, are fairly flat. We don't have a lot of movement articulation on the facade. And we felt that because we were on more of a residential street and they had more of a row house, they are more of a row house or townhouse effect, we tried to pick up those movements forward and back from the sidewalk. So that's why this building isn't as flat and there's a lot more movement in and out. And which also then breaks up the building vertically, so it does more or less represent, like across the street, there would be different townhouses, different architectural styles. I mean, although they're very similar in plane, ours would, they move in and out, which breaks up that long facade into more vertical townhouse type facade. And I also did want to add, um, in response to Yenza's comment about the five-story. Can I keep going?
Yep.
Yeah, about the five-story and the tunnel effect. If you, if Cosmo wants to flip all the way to the back slide, uh, which shows the elevations, the five-story doesn't start until where the townhouses across the street end. So essentially, that, I think it was the second to last. Wait, keep going. Oh, go back, go back, go back to the plan itself, the elevations. Right there. So on that bottom, um, sketch where we superimposed the streetscape, you can see where basically where the last building ends, there's an overlap by, I think, one building or three quarters of a building. And that's where the five-story starts. So it really, the five-story really is opposite the, the mass of the building or the majority of the buildings, opposite the open parking area on the corner. And I think I said last time, if in fact that, that ever gets filled in, it most likely will be the larger scale because it's on, um, Federal Street. So the tunnel effect is really greatly reduced by the fact that at that point, like 60% of the building faces an open lot, so. I don't know if that's clear to everybody, but, uh,
Then, James, the, the traffic pattern is important because it, it, and, and it was, we've studied it a lot. I never really said that we could reduce it to zero traffic to, you know, to Fifth Avenue, but, uh, we, what I did say is that we're going to see if we could have, we could have it split. So it goes down Laundry and Fifth Avenue. And then when Clough Harbor, uh, put their comments together, they highlighted some of the conflicts that we previously had. And I think Nick did a great job addressing those conflict and, 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 and traffic really flows nicely where we don't even need that signaling system. That signaling system would only be if we were, technically, if we were, and I want to bring up that plan because we did spend some time on this and I know it's important for the community. See that, see by, by being a, by, by just having these 24 spots coming down to, on Fifth, it allows, it, it, it reduces the conflict because the problem by having folks coming that, on Fifth and coming out on the, on this alley here, you're kind of, this is a tight, it's technically not too tight, but Clough Harbor thought it was and we kind of agreed, it's around, you know, 19 feet, give or take. And, 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 and there's no reason to because there's only 24 cars. Peak hour traffic for 24 cars is probably 12 cars. That means there's like every, every, uh, every five minutes in peak hour, one car's coming out. Okay? That's, that's what essentially means. And Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know I don't practice engineering like you do every day. I just make believe I do. But thi- there's essentially, essentially that's what it really means for the community. Don't get so hung up on, on the, the number of cars and parking. It's 24 cars, right? And according to all these handbooks and all these studies, the, it's the peak hour traffic, they calculated to be approximately around 12 cars. Peak hour, that means on average, if you take 60 minutes and you divide it by 12 cars, every car comes out of that parking lot on average during the peak hour every five minutes. So it really doesn't really impact the traffic as much as you think it would, right? And I agree with you. The only reason why I know it doesn't, because, you know, we're, we're engineers and we studied this and I, and I, and I get it, but it's only one car every five minutes that comes out of that lot. Okay? And then in terms of other differences, uh, James, this, this, this project contemplates is some retail area, which we did in on the first project. We think this is a better place for it as well. It's a little bit more visible and it goes into the, the vision plan that, that the city of Troy has to, to minimize, uh, the, the, you know, take one lane out, out of Federal and, and activate Federal Street, which I know is a plan that, you know, the city is, is, is in the process of, of working and studying. So we want to try to be proactive and make sure we, we design for the, for the future there.
Cosmo, I just wanted to clarify, um, I, I don't have an issue with, with some of the traffic exiting onto Fifth. My question was more the need for the traffic control and how it actually would operate.
Yeah, we don't necessarily need it. We don't necessarily need it if we have, if we have a, a traffic just going out to Fifth and not down the ramp. Okay? But if we felt like we needed, it's essentially like a, a sensor that has this car, the car that comes up to here, it stops when there's a car that goes past the stop sign, because we know that a car going past the stop sign is gonna eventually come out. Okay?
So it's not shown on the plan?
Yeah, and we don't, we don't, we don't really need that. If, if we needed it, we'll put it, but it's, 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 I don't think we need it based on this, on this flow.
I have, I have one last question. Um, the first floor here is parking, correct?
This is a serious question.
Yep. So, so that, that first floor interaction on Fifth Ave, when you're looking through those, those windows, will you see through into the parking lot or are they going to be glazed or is it?
Glazed. They'll be glazed like King's One if you look at King's One, right, George? I mean, I think that's what we want to do.
Yeah, the idea is that what we typically do, and we've done this in other urban areas, is we want to keep some light coming out onto the street. It's a safety factor and it's also, you know, for a pedestrian scale. So you make those spandrel glass or tran- you know, translucent glass and there'd be some lower level of lighting behind there. So when you're walking down the street, you're not just walking against a dark wall. So during the day, you'll get reflections and, you know, things like that off the windows. And at night, you'll get the light coming out onto the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Um, Marie, are you on the, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, if you could give your first and last name and address for the record and, um, keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Marie Gavazzi, 1922 Fifth Avenue. So I appreciate the efforts that the developer has gone to, to try to address the concerns of the neighborhood. I, I was wondering about the sewer capacity. I'm not sure whether the city is aware of this, but a number of my neighborhood neighbors have had difficulties with, uh, the sewer, being able to handle the water during the storms. I'm not sure how, where they're proposing the water, the sewage, sewage from the project is going to go in relation to our neighborhood. But, uh, I've been, I've been hearing more neighborhood, neighbors can express that they've had problems. And lastly, although I never like to see historic buildings torn down, I would advocate for as many historic, uh, elements to be saved and salvaged as possible if that does occur with this project. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ree. I don't have a first name, but, but Jay Wade?
Yes, my name is John Wade and, uh, I live at 1920 Fifth Avenue, just down the street. And the Fifth Avenue District, beginning at Broadway going to Federal Street, was the first national registered district in New York State to go on the National Register. And this area, uh, from, uh, Federal Street North, uh, I think is eligible to be listed in the National Register. And the four buildings that are being taken down And the four buildings that are being taken down, proposed to be taken down, meet, I think, the criteria for listing in the National Register as part of the district. It would be good if those buildings could be incorporated, uh, into, uh, the building. I think there's a problem and it's been brought out by the, uh, talk of the parking, um, exiting onto Fifth Avenue and the need for a light that the project seems to be out of scale with the neighborhood. There are no five-story residential buildings, uh, in this area of downtown. It uses materials that like, an awful lot of it is, uh, cement fiber board. That's not a, a material that's, uh, traditionally used in downtown Troy. The colors aren't exactly, uh, what, uh, were used historically in downtown Troy. If you look at the proportions of the buildings, not only the massing, but the proportion of the windows, they're not typical downtown Troy. The elevation is more typical of what you'd see in a suburban area, freestanding building. The lower level being parking, that's means that that whole stretch of the streets is essentially going to be dead. There's not going to be people going in and out of the buildings the way there is with the, uh, other buildings on Fifth Avenue. And, um, there's a lot of advantages for that area to be included in the National Register, such as tax credits, historic preservation tax credits for owners. New York State has a new residential tax credit program. There are other economic incentives. But, uh, if you think of it, 59, uh, apartments in a, uh, five-story building is much, uh, is a great deal out of proportion from the, uh, rest of the neighborhood. And the design, I think, needs a lot of work for it to be more compatible with. It's, uh, not the kind of thing that's going to be, uh, an asset to the architecture of downtown Troy. If you look at the new book on downtown Troy architecture, there's nothing in it that, uh, has any, uh, connection with, uh, this proposed facade. And, uh, I assume Seeker hasn't, uh, submitted yet. And, uh, I think, uh, the Seeker application should uh, mention the historic nature of the district and of the buildings that are being, uh, proposed to be taken down. I think that the building should relate, should be a lot less dense, but it also should relate a lot better to the neighbor. It is not going to be a good architectural neighbor to a distinctive, uh, streetscape in downtown Troy.
Thank you, John. Dory Day? Dory, I see your hand up. Would you like to speak?
Can you hear me?
Uh, we can now, yes. Please state your full name and address for, oh, you, you muted yourself again. Dory, you're going to have to unmute yourself if you want to make a, a comment.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
We, we can. Please state your name and address for the.
My name is Doris, D O R I S, last name Day, D A Y. I live at 11 Stenard Avenue in Troy. I attend Bethel Baptist Church at 2165 Fifth Avenue. Um, my question is, I'm not quite sure, um, has, how many floors to this, these new developments are coming? Because I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the height of this now. Have, I can't tell with the adjustments made if they have lowered the height of the buildings.
Okay, un- unfortunately during the public comment, we, we can't have a back and forth. But the, the, the building will be a maximum of five stories uh, along Federal Street. And then, um, George, correct me if I'm wrong, it, it goes down to four stories, uh, further, further down Fifth Avenue.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Now, why I'm asking is because, um, judging from the structure that is there presently, it, it's very concerning to our congregation that, uh, we will now be enclosed. And this is very, it's becoming very ominous and closed in. Not to mention the parking situation here, which is now becoming a major issue even with, um, on-street parking. And our church is not even in session at this point in time. Uh, I've driven through the area various points today, on early morning and into the evening. And that street is very narrow and it's becoming very congested because in, uh, individuals who are living there now are now parking on the street. And, um, you, you know, um, and there's a building on River Street, on King Street, behind the church, which is now also being redeveloped. And the guy was telling me there's going to be more people living there. So, you know, it's becoming a pretty congested area for, um, the, I'd say the amount of people who are going to live there. We, the church is there and we, we do functions throughout the week or whatever, but Sunday, our primary day. And we do have our own parking lot, but I, it's, it seems like the area is becoming overdeveloped for some reason. I mean, we have a lot of development in the city of Troy. And I'm looking at this and I'm kind of comparing it to what, um, they call City Station, uh, off of Congress Street. And it's starting to look a little bit like that kind of a, of, um, development again. And Troy is supposed to be a historic place. The ambiance of the city is based on the architectural structure. But we're changing it rapidly by including all of this new development, which doesn't actually fit into the neighborhood. So that's just my primary concern. And I think that's a concern of a lot of our church members as well.
Thank you, Doris. Uh, just, um, again, for the record, can I have the, your, your address?
11 Stenard, my home address is 11 Stenard Avenue, Troy, New York. And I attend church at Bethel Baptist, 2165 Fifth Avenue. And I am chairperson of the trustee board.
Thank you, thank you, Doris. Yes, Beth- Bethel Baptist Church, uh, for, anyone else on the line is immediately adjacent to this.
Yes.
This project. Um, DeeDee, uh, are, are you open to having repeat comments, seeing as it's, it's 7:40?
Yeah, if we can just keep them very brief.
Okay, uh, Dreya, you have your hand up. Would you like to make another, another comment?
I'll, I'll keep it very short. Uh, again, I'm at 2227 Fifth Avenue, just down the street. Um, I, I do like the articulation of the facade. That, there was a, a note that came up earlier. I do like the articulation of the facade. Um, I understand that the developers, uh, have made an effort to reduce the traffic on the street. It's not optimal, but I can deal with it, I think. Um, the question that has not been dealt with is about the parking on the street and how to control the amount of extra parking that's going to be happening with the residents of this project if they don't pay the extra, whatever is required for, um, for a parking space in the garage. That's my concern and many others' concern.
Thank you. Um, I don't see any other hands up, so I'll just state it one more time. If you'd like to make any comments about King's Landing 2, please use, uh, Zoom and raise, raise your hand. And if you're unclear how to do that, please unmute, unmute yourself and, uh, just let us know you'd like to make a comment. Okay, Chairwoman, I, I don't see any other members of the public who wish to speak.
Okay, thank you. So without there being any other members that would like to speak, I'll ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing.
Question?
Yes.
Okay, when we would close the public hearing, does that close it for the project or just for tonight?
The, the public hearing bar can be opened at a later date. But if not opened again, it would close the public hearing.
Okay, my concern is that, uh, the neighbors did not know about it. And, uh, so, some people did the best they could to get word out. But I want to make sure there will be time for the neighbors to, um, to comment. Is it possible to just leave the public comment period open? Yes.
That, that, that could be, that could be done, uh, Barb, but the, um, there would need to be, uh, a motion either way.
Okay, so the, and my other point is that I am going to recuse myself at this point because I have a neighbor to the project. So I did not speak tonight in the public hearing. But now I am actually recusing myself and, but not to speak tonight.
Oh, okay, Barb, in the, in the future, um, please, please let us know, uh, you're going to recuse yourself ahead of time because I'm going to now need to move you into the lobby for the, the rest of this discussion.
And what does that mean?
Uh, that means, uh, you, you will not be able to speak or hear the discussion that's, that's taking place.
Okay, that was not my intent. My intent was to not, um, participate in the board actions, but to still be a human being and a neighbor. So, but it's not my intent to just put myself completely off the, the communication. So, but, uh, but anyway.
I apologize, but, but, but on it, yeah, on Zoom, it's, it's not possible. If, if we were, uh, if you were to recuse yourself, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, during a, a traditional meeting, we would ask that you leave the meeting room.
For the, for the public discussion and everything?
That is correct.
Okay.
Which is a correct analysis, Aaron, but I think what I hear Barb saying is that she may want to comment as a neighbor, not as a board member. She, she's obviously heard something or made a decision that she cannot be objective. So she's recused herself as a planning commission member. Um, she still would, however, retain rights as a member of the public to comment on the application. I know it's a little weird, but she would have the right to comment as a member of the public.
Uh, it's not weird at all, actually. That makes a lot more sense. DeeDee, how would you like to proceed?
And just so everybody's clear, you don't lose your ability by joining the planning commission to vocalize your opinion as a member of the public on a particular application. You just, if you can't be objective, you need to recuse yourself from being, acting as a board member. And then if you choose to exercise your First Amendment rights to comment, you're doing it as a citizen, not as a board member.
Thank you, Andy. That's very helpful.
So, so Barb, before the, the public hearing is voted on, whether to be adjourned or to be closed, do you wish to make any comments as a member of the public?
No, I just would like to have the, another chance some other time. I don't want to prolong the meeting tonight.
Okay, and, and, and Barbara, can I have your address for the record?
2167 Fifth Avenue.
Okay, and I will, in my notes, I will, I will have, uh, I will add that to the comments that we received tonight to keep the public hearing open.
Great, thank you very much. And then I am recused as far as the vote. And I, I expect that that's the case. I'm, I'm recusing myself now.
Yes.
Just, just to be clear, Barb and everybody else, you'd, you'd be recused, uh, not just for the vote, but also any board discussion? You're no longer able to participate in board deliberations or discussions. Your, your role now is limited to commenting as a member of the public.
Yes, thank you very much. I, I understand that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, DeeDee, the, uh, the ball's back in your court. How would you like to proceed?
All right, so we, we, do we have a motion on the table already? We had a motion, right?
I, I don't believe so.
There was a motion.
So, um, I believe we're looking for a, a motion to keep the public, to, correct me if I'm wrong, to keep the public hearing open?
It would be a motion to either close the public hearing or adjourn, uh, adjourn the public hearing.
Adjourn, I would assume, adjourn the public hearing.
Okay, DeeDee makes a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
This is Sarah Wengert. I second that motion.
Uh, DeeDee Rudolph? How do you vote?
Aye, yes.
Sarah Wengert?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Barbara Higbee abstains. Anthony Moen?
Yes.
The motion to adjourn the public hearing passes 4-0.
Aaron, not, not to overlawy it, but Barb recused. Abstains means she's still part of the board, but she didn't vote. Recused means she's not acting as part of the board.
Thank you for that clarification, Andy. I will, uh, correct the notes.
Okay, so with the, should we proceed with any, uh, board questions or comments regarding this application tonight?
Is the, Andy, does the motion to adjourn the public hearing adjourn the, the discussion on this project?
No, the, the board would still be able to have discussions. Um, what the board may want to do is reserve those discussions to, so they're on the record of the public hearing next month. But what I would suggest, in fairness to the applicant, if there are any concerns the board members, um, have or would like to see addressed in next month's meeting, uh, let them know now, uh, so they, so they can, you know, get to work for the next month and be prepared to address whatever concerns they heard from the public this evening, as well as any concerns that the board members may have that they would like addressed.
Erin, DeeDee, this is Sarah Wengert. I would like to make a few comments. I would like to recognize Mr. Waite's comments that he has shared regarding the historical nature of this particular block, though not listed on the register. It clearly contributes to the architectural character of this city. I would also add that like its relative King's Landing I, this project is situated on a very prominent location in the city. It is at the gate to the city, uh, where most people enter, uh, across the Green Island Bridge. And so it's visible. And I think there's an opportunity for this building to be a remarkable piece of architecture. And at this time, it does not appear to do that. Uh, I have heard comments from members of the neighborhood who, who are apparently satisfied with some of the revisions to the facade of the building. And, uh, though I appreciate that, I would express that, um, that the building does not directly respond to its context, but nor does it present, um, a, a forward-thinking, uh, architectural piece or landmark at this important site. And, and it's a, it's a tough challenge. And I, I want to recognize that and I hope that others will recognize that. It's a, it's really tough. There's a huge amount of responsibility on the development of this site. And I just don't see it gelling yet. I do not live at Fifth Avenue. I can't. I do not live at Fifth Avenue. I cannot commiserate, although I do empathize with traffic and parking challenges. So I can appreciate that, and I look to colleagues and members of the community to speak to that. But I'm, I'm speaking to the architectural quality of the building and, and, um, I'm asking for more. And I would suggest that a little more thought be put into it. I know, a, a, and the tough thing is that the applicant has heard conflicting concerns about the design of the building. But, uh, I'd ask that you take the month to push it a little bit further and insist upon at the next meeting, uh, that we all be given the opportunity to look at the actual proposed materials in the proposed colors, not to be changed in the future without planning commission approval. Somehow, whether that's a photograph of actual samples or samples delivered to City Hall, somehow the applicant, I ask you to find a way to show us exactly what the materials and colors will be for this building. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Sarah. Does anyone else have comments from the board?
This is Suzanne. I would like to, um, basically what Sarah said. I agree with her.
Thank you. All right, well, we are not taking action on this project tonight, so we will see the applicant again at our next meeting. I know that there has been work between the engineer and, uh, a lot, a lot of good information provided today.
Uh, before we move on, Dee Dee, if I could, um, the, the applicant should submit a revised seeker form.
Yes.
I believe there were some, uh, either, either errors or omissions on the, the previous seeker form that we received. Um, and also before, um, I believe before this should be scheduled, uh, for, for a future meeting, the, the comments, uh, that we received from our third-party consultant should be addressed. And we should have a, a revised letter issued by that consultant before, before we schedule this again.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Aaron, uh, you, you, if you don't schedule it, you don't adjourn it to a date certain, then you would have to renotice, uh, both by publication and notice to the five closest adjacent.
The intent would be that, that the applicant's able to satisfy those requirements for, for the next meeting. So this would be adjourned until next month, not, not an indeterminate date. Do, does the board need to make, does the commission need to make a motion to that effect? Or is this the motion that was made suffice?
No, I just, as long as it's clear that it's adjourned to next month's meeting. So the public that's here tonight is all aware it's going to be on the agenda for next month. It might be adjourned again if those items haven't been provided, but it is definitely going to be on next month's agenda.
Yes, that's my understanding. Cosmo, can you confirm? Is that your intent?
Yes, that's the intent.
Thank you. Uh, Dee Dee, you're on mute.
I realize that. Thank you. So, so that being said, I think we're moving on to new business.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let me get out of this. So it says we should start after seven. I believe we have done that. We have two items on our new business agenda. The first one is PLPC twenty-two-zero-three-one, which is one oh-one to one-nineteen Country Garden Apartments. It's, uh, coming before the planning commission for site plan review and secret determination. So I believe the, is the applicant here?
Yes, we are. This is Roger Keating from the Chazen Companies.
Hello?
Hello.
Could give a brief, a brief description of your project and overview? I believe you're here for informational purposes only.
Yeah, I would, yeah, so we're here for the first time, first time tonight, um, to, to present the project. Just real quick, Aaron, should I try and share my screen? Would that be best? Or, oh, he, he popped away. I can try and do that.
Yes, please. I see.
Okay, you guys-
Yes, we see it.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure. I have two screens before me, so I never know which one is going to pop up. So, okay, great. Um, again, Roger Keating from the Chazen Companies, um, here tonight on behalf of Country Gardens Acres Apartments, to give you guys a overview of the proposed concept plan that we have for the project. Country Gardens is located at one-ten Colleen Road. The existing complex is located on, uh, two tax parcels, around thirty-nine acres in size. It's located in the R-three multifamily residential zoning district. And, um, the proposed expansion is consistent with the, um, the type of use that they're looking to do here within the district. Currently today, um, the Country Gardens Apartments, um, has a hundred and sixty-eight, um, units, along with the associated parking lots, um, and driveways. And as it stands today, the existing parking ratio counts over there are around one and a half parking spaces for every unit in the complex. The proposed expansion, um, looks to bring an additional hundred and forty-four, um, apartments to the complex. Um, and it's going to provide a, a mix of, of different, um, size apartment buildings, four, twelve, and sixteen-unit, um, par, apartments. The, the mix also will include some that'll have an attached garage, so that there'll be a parking space that'll be located, um, in front of those units as well as the garage. And then the balance of those would use, um, an expansion of the, um, surface parking lots, um, that are, that are out there. Also, the, the proposed ratio that we would have for parking would be pretty consistent with what's out there today. Again, with a one and a half to one. However, it should be noted that, um, the, the, the city's code requires, um, two parking spaces for every unit. So we will need to seek relief, um, from the zoning board. But we wanted to come here tonight to introduce the project so that we could, um, then bring, after hearing some, uh, input from this board, we would then, um, bring our zoning application for the variance to that board. The site has, uh, access to, um, all public utilities as it relates to water sewer. And in fact, some, some water and sewer actually is, already exists, um, today, from our previous approval that this, this site had for an expansion around ten years ago. And a lot of the proposed plan as the layout of the roads, as you see, will, do follow some of those previous paths. The, the project also, um, will obviously deserve over an acre of land, so it'll be subject to New York State's, uh, DC's stormwater requirements. Will prepare a SWIP that'll manage and capture and treat stormwater before it discharges off-site. Stormwater from this site, um, the closed systems that exist today, um, discharge to the Wyandotte Skoll. So, um, this site doesn't have any, uh, stormwater discharges to the sewer systems, um, over here on the side of the city. Just a couple of other things. The existing, the existing pond complex has, um, an existing walking trail that goes, uh, as a loop around the, uh, project site. As part of the planned development of this, we would look to incorporate that storm dust path in a much larger loop to, to go around the, um, project site. Um, and the property also, um, creates a unique opportunity to, um, also help further the vision of, um, one of the initiatives with the city with, which was the, um, Troy Urban Trail. There was a master plan that was prepared, um, a few years back. Um, our company had the opportunity, um, to be involved in that. And, um, of, of note is that the, the, um, the master plan that was previously prepared, actually had the Country Gardens Apartment Complex on there. And, um, and the, the thought is up on this side of the city, the Troy Urban Trail Network is fractured in some areas. And this, this particular site, um, when we were doing that master plan years ago, was of interest. And we're fortunate enough today to be working with the Country Gardens, uh, folks here because it provides, uh, an opportunity to help provide some interconnect. That was part of that master plan, um, to be able to, to, um, convey some lands back to the city, that would allow that Troy Urban Trail, um, vision to continue on. And just of, of note here, we have about seven acres of land that we would look to convey back over to the city to help support that Troy Urban Trail development. Of particular note, it allows for some interconnectivity down here by the firehouse on Campbell Avenue, which then would allow for some of that trail network to come up. And I worked with our landscape architects here that worked with the city on the, on the last, um, master plan to, um, make sure that we reserve some of the areas up top here to go back so that the, the trail can, can use, utilize some of those nice, um, nice and holes up on there. So that's a big overview of the project. We feel that it's, um, um, it's a nice opportunity to provide that amenity, internal to the site for having, um, uh, some internal trails that'll ultimately look to connect to what the Troy Urban Trail Network has. Um, and then, you know, we're, we're here to introduce the project, um, get some input, and then look to, you know, get referred back over to the, um, to the, to the zoning board to, um, continue the discussion over there as it relates to parking. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the board.
Okay, thank you. I'll open, does anybody have any questions or comments? I have, I, I guess I'll start with the parking. Why do you want a reduced amount of parking?
Well, um, because we, currently today, it's around the, again, what exists out there today is around a one and a half to one, um, ratio. So we feel that we're not overparked, um, today, um, as it relates to how much, how much parking is currently being used at the facility. So, um, we feel that, that one and a half to one ratio, um, is a good mix. Um, and then for some of the, the units that have the garage attached to it, we feel that we can reduce some of our surface parking lots by having a garage attached there as well because we could use that garage space, um, you know, to help reduce the amount of impervious cover that we would be building as it relates to surface lots. So, so that's, that was, you know, really where our target was because we find that the parking that's out there today, um, really works for, for the tenants that we have.
Okay, so I guess we should make a, should we open the public hearing tonight? So, make a motion to open the public hearing for public comment? Is there a motion?
Dee Dee, this is Sarah Wengert. I make a motion to open the hearing for public comment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, so I will-
Dee Dee, I have, um, a few people raising their hands. Would you like-
Okay, I didn't see that. Okay, good. I didn't see-
Okay. First, um, will be, uh, James, James Rath, uh, from our, from our planning department. James, are you making these comments in a, in a private capacity or, or on the city's behalf? James?
Hey, sorry. I'd like to speak as, as staff. I, I manage, um, all the trail efforts essentially for the city of Troy. Uh, I've been speaking with Roger and, and working on, uh, on the other side of things with, uh, the Narrows Group, which is, uh, focused on creating an urban trail network in this neighborhood, primarily through the Burden Pond Preserve across the street on Campbell, the Stalison Preserve just behind this site, um, to the southeast or east and a little bit south, and then the Troy landfill as well, which is, uh, just south and a little bit east of this as well. So that, we see this as a huge opportunity for the city to expand its urban trail network. The, uh, slide that Roger has up on the screen right now showing the yellow area conveyed to the city would be huge. I have a couple of folks who work on that project with me, uh, from the community that can speak to, uh, what this opportunity means for us and how it can potentially even be tweaked a little bit to help a little bit more. Um, and then additionally, Roger, I, I'm just noticing now some of the, the walking paths that you have shown. And I just wanted to throw out a quick comment, um, in that it would be great if they connected to the cul-de-sacs or any of the kind of dead-end areas where, um, you know, there's not really a lot of interaction otherwise. So that's just kind of an aside, but, um, yeah, I'll kind of leave it at that. I just wanted to express to the board or the commission, um, what a big opportunity this is for the city. And then kind of, uh, yeah, turn it over to John Johansson and a couple of other folks, uh, if that's okay.
If I could just piggyback quickly on, on James's comments. We, the city is currently working on plans, uh, and I don't know if this was mentioned, for the, for the Campbell Ave Bridge. So we'll be replacing that soon. And the, the intent would be to find a way to incorporate, as a part of that project, some connections to the potential trail system that will be constructed as part of, as part of this project and as part of the overall plan that, that Chazen had prepared, uh, for the city.
Yeah, and I should, and Aaron, I shared some of that information with you and just some of my comments on the Campbell, on the Campbell Ave Bridge project. So, um, you know, I think it's, it is a unique opportunity here for us all.
Okay, um, if I'm, if I'm moving on to additional public comments, I have, uh, John Johansson. John, if you'd like to comment? Okay, I don't believe John has, uh, an audio connection, um.
This is Joe Durkin. Can you hear me?
Yes, Joe, Joe, can you, can you give me your last name and spell that, please?
It's, uh, D-U-R-K-I-N.
Thank you. And Joe, where, where do you reside?
Well, I'm, I'm on the board of the Rensselaer Land Trust. The Rensselaer Land Trust owns the Stalison Preserve that James mentioned, which is just upstream from, um, the project here, along the Wyandotte Skoll to the end of Wyandotte Skoll Way. The Rensselaer Land, and I'm also the steward of the Stalison Preserve. I spend a lot of time there, working on the trails there and maintaining the property. The Rensselaer Land Trust entered into an MOU with the city of Troy several years ago to participate in the urban trail system that we're talking about. And, uh, we've participated over the past couple of years to try to help the city, uh, obtain funding from the CFA applications to, uh, put in a bridge that would, uh, get across, uh, the Wyandotte Skoll. We have not obtained the funding. The property that is being proposed now as a possible conveyance to the city would resolve that problem. It would actually connect the property, it would make all the connections that we actually need to make to connect Burden Pond Preserve to the Troy property. And once that connection is made, then we could connect the Stalison property to the Troy property, which is adjacent to the Country Garden Apartments. Once that is done, you'll have a two-mile walking trail system. I know I'm telling you all exactly what you already know, but I just want to reiterate that. So we from the Rensselaer Land Trust, uh, support, um, this initiative because it's been in the works for a long time. And I think this will facilitate accomplishing a tremendous goal that the city's been working on for a long time. And not only is this on a, a, a master plan for the Troy Urban Trails, but it's also in the Troy comprehensive plan as well. Uh, if you look at map eight, you'll see the Narrows Trail on there. There's also mention of the Stalison Preserve in the Troy comprehensive plan. So, uh, this is a major, major accomplishment, uh, would be a major accomplishment on behalf of the city. So, uh, the Rensselaer Land Trust supports that, uh, acquisition of the property. Thank you.
Aaron, can I chime in for a second?
Um, hang on, Kevin. We have a few, a few other people that- Hang on, Kevin, we have a few, a few other people that, uh, beat you to it. So just bear with me a moment here. John Johansson, are, do you now have audio?
Yeah, I, I hope, can you guys hear me? Okay, great. I think, I think you can. I, I was having some technical issues. I apologize. Um, yeah, I'm John Johansson at, um, 152 Mill Street. So right in the neighborhood there. I'm also one of the coordinators for the Narrows Project. And I just wanted to say first off that like, I, I really appreciate the proactive effort on the part of the developer and Chazen to kind of look, you know, at the site sort of outside of the limited development potential and really think about these connections. I think it's really admirable, um, and very appreciated. Yeah, and I think I just plus one everything that Joe said. You know, the potential here is fantastic. The only thing that I would add is that, um, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at the topography, you know, of the site and, uh, the yellow area is, uh, really fantastic. There are a few areas where it doesn't quite meet the needs of the trail to actually connect through. But I think they're fairly minor, so I'm hoping that, you know, I, I don't know what the process is for that. I'm glad to connect with Chazen just to kind of give them some pointers on that or, you know, collaborate in any way, um, you know, to get that situated. But it's really close. It's, it's really fantastic. Again, it's very admirable that they're doing this. And, you know, as long as, uh, we can figure out a way to really maximize is the potential for the property and connect the Narrows through this, to this kind of isolated city property. I really support the project going through. So, um, again, appreciate it and that, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Heezy or Hesey?
It's Hesey, yes.
Can you please state your, your full name and address for the record, please?
Sure, it's Hesey Phillips and I own a house at 107.
I believe we have a volume issue. It's, it's a little difficult to hear you.
Oh, is that better? Is that better?
Is, can someone else confirm that that's a, a volume issue?
We can barely hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, fantastically.
Sorry about that. Um, I am Hesey Phillips and I'm at 107 Mill Street. I own a house there and I also run an art center that is at 71 Mill Street. Both of them are about a block or two away from Campbell Avenue in South Troy. And I just also want to second, um, uh, what John Johansson and others have said about the importance of having that open land be conveyed to the city so we can get these trails in. I think the open space is a real asset that we have in Troy. And I have seen some of the maps of what is needed in that area. So if we can just tweak that, that, that extra 10% more to make sure that, that trail is complete in the way that needs to be, I think that would be fantastic. Other than that, no other immediate comments. Just want to say, uh, thanks for, yeah, thinking in that direction in advance.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Kevin Vandenberg? Just make sure you, you unmute yourself.
You need, you need my address as well, Aaron?
I'm sorry?
You want my address and everything as well, Aaron?
Uh, yes, for the record, please.
My name is Kevin Vandenberg. I reside at 4343 Ninth Avenue in North Troy. And I rep, I, I'm here as a representative for, for, for Country Gardens, in particular more establishment who owns the, owns the complex. The complex has been in his family's, uh, ownership since the sixties, the early sixties. And I don't know if we're going to, the, the, the last woman asked for a little more land and that might be tough to do. And we'll certainly listen to anything that they want to come up with for draw, for, for lines or something like that and see if we can accommodate. But, but right there, it, it, that, that area gives us what we need for protection for the water and every, for the stormwater and everything that we need. But we certainly would try to do that with them. What I do want to tell the, the folks that have just spoke, and, and I hope they're still listening, is we've got another piece down the hill too that we want to talk to them about. Down off of Thomas Street. That, that we might want to make a donation, some land to them there as well. That maybe they can keep in contact with, uh, with, uh, the gentleman from Chazen. And, uh, we could probably show him some maps and stuff on that as well.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, and, and I can reach out to John. And obviously, um, you know, I, I'm staying in contact here with, um, with, uh, James at the city as well and Aaron here, you know, just trying to make sure that we, um, we keep this, to keep this type of thing coordinated with, um, with all the parties. So, um, and Kevin, I'll be happy to, um, share some of that information with them. I'll coordinate with you on that before I do so.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Um, I have, I have three more, uh, hands raised. I apologize, I, I did not see in which order that was done. So I'm just going to go, uh, in order here on my screen. Dan Pfeifer?
Hi, yeah, this is Dan Pfeifer. I live at 143 North Street in North Troy. I don't live close to this development, but I do spend time in that part of the city. And I just wanted to add my support for what John Johansson said. And, and add that, um, specifically, I'd like to see that this project connects the Narrows to city land. I think that's important to it, being usable. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Guy Schaefer?
Hey, I wanted to also speak up, uh, kind of to echo what Sean and Hesey and Dan.
Address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, my, I live at 161 Second Street in Troy. And so, yeah, I just want to also express that I'm a avid fan of the Arrow's Trail in Troy. I don't live near it right now, but I'm planning on moving to South Troy in the near future in order to be closer to the trail. Um, and I just want to express this is super important to me and my partner and our dog. Um, and we spend a lot of time there. And so, um, I really want to, you know, applaud the, the Country Gardens Apartments for wanting to work with the Narrows Project. And I really want to encourage Country Gardens to, you know, as Hesey was saying, try to, you know, increase the amount they're able to give, um, you know, try to make sure that it connects meaningfully, uh, to city land, um, just for more effective public use. So, um, yeah, uh, you know, just, uh, thank you. And also, uh, uh, you know, I encourage, uh, working with the Narrows Project as much as you can to try to figure out, uh, how to most effectively donate land that can support the trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. E, uh, Simmons?
Yes, my name is Eric Siemens and I live at 71 Mill Street, adjacent to or about a block away from the properties in question. I just wanted to add.
Eric, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I didn't get your address and I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you.
Okay, um, my name is Eric Siemens and I live at 71 Mill Street, uh, very close to the properties in question. And I just wanted to echo my support for what several of the last people have, have said, that it's an exciting and ambitious and, uh, foresightful, uh, uh, project. And I'm very, very pleased to support it in any way possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tess?
Hi, my name is Tess Meyer and I live at 50 Springwood, um, right there in the general area. And I just want to echo really what everyone has said. I deeply support the Narrows Project and connecting it to city land. And I really hope that that can go through.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. If anyone else wishes to speak, if you could just unmute yourself and just let us know. Chairwoman, I believe that's all we have for public comment this evening.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. So I believe it's time to make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
This is Suzanne. I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sarah Wengert, I second it.
Aaron, do you want to take a vote or?
Sorry, I, yes, it works better when you can hear me. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, I would ask if there's any other questions that the board members may have of the applicant regarding this application tonight. We had a lot of good feedback. I guess I have a question. Are they, what, how many stories are each of the buildings? Are they all similar to what is there today?
Yes, the heights are going to be very similar to what you see there today. They basically have like a two and a half story, um, type of unit that's there today. So it'll, it'll be, they'll be, they'll be a similar height.
So are they all the same height?
Um, they're, they're, the, the smaller ones, um, may just be like a regular two story.
Okay, so I see that it's near, uh, you know, residential neighborhood. I'm trying to figure out from the, I can't from this plan as to, uh, in contrast to the, uh, single family homes.
Yeah, so across the street in this general area, if you can still see my screen, these are all industrial uses over here for the most part, um, right across the way. So, um, and then as you get up to this first intersection, it, it begins a few single family homes. When you get over here, this is, uh, I believe this is where the Bosse's building is, if I'm not mistaken, which is adjacent to the property or, um, to the south. So, um, this is, this is where the residential properties begin. These are all, uh, commercial and industrial, um, right across the street from us.
Right, so would the proposed buildings that are in that area near the residential be, what height would those buildings be, I guess is my question?
They'd be very similar. Um, this, this building here is again, that's similar to that two, two and a half story, uh, building here. Uh, we would just end up putting another one, um, to the side of it. And, and what we would do is similar to, um, if you drive up and down, uh, the road here, you'll see that the way the, the site is landscaped, it provides, um, a very nice vegetated screen, um, along, along this property for the, the residents here as well. So there's a, there's a slight berm along that side and then it's planted. So we would, we would mimic, mimic some of that over in this general area here. I wanted to get the landscaping plan, um, here, but for some reason it's not in the set. But I'll, um, but on the next submissions, I can help, um, shows, illustrate some of that for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can you hear me?
I'm sorry. Hey, Kevin.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the one building that's out closest to the road is, is probably the only building that will be visible from the road and all of the, in all the additional buildings that are being done. It's heavily wooded in the back there and, and it's really, uh, to, to see it from the road out here, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see it even during the, even during the winter when the, when the foliage is down. The other thing too is that I want to point out is that is along the edge of the road, uh, Colleen, where you can see that wa, that walking path along the edge.
Yes.
That's utilized by the neighborhood. A lot of the neighborhood goes in at that point there. So we spoke a little bit, Morris, uh, Kalishman and I, about some of the overgrown apriori that are around, about potentially moving some of them away from the building along the road. But we'd like to have this, we're going to have to just have one part where the neighbors can have access and where they noted that that path is still there for them.
Yeah, we're going to incorporate something, so there's almost like a little trailhead over there, um, Kevin. And then people could be able to use that as a, as a launching point to get back to the, the Troy Urban Trail Network as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions from the board?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Yes, this is Anthony. I believe in the original, uh, presentation, you had stated that as far as the levels of parking that the current project as it exists is actually under parked. Is there any possibility of restoring some of the existing surface parking, to something else in light of the fact that it seems like, you know, with the new, uh, buildings having garages, you're not going to need additional parking? And there is currently an excess of parking?
Yeah, um, we're, we're, we're looking at how we can, you know, keep it right around that one and a half to one is, is really, um, you know, that target range, um, for us. But I can most certainly take a look at it with, uh, with Kevin and Morris if there's, um, some areas where we can, where we can, um, you know, move things back a little bit.
Uh, this is Aaron chiming in here. Has, has an official application been submitted to the ZBA for the variances you're seeking?
Um, I have the application in hand, Aaron. I was just waiting before I submitted that, um, from comments from tonight, just in case that there was something, um, you know, that was really significant in, in the change that would, um, you know, that would move the needle, um, one way or the other.
Okay, well, I would just, um, I would just like to say that, that I, I believe the parking ratio that's being proposed, um, at less than the required two per unit is, is, is more in line with, um, with the actual demand that a development like this would see. And the commission, Dee Dee, could, uh, if they, if they choose, make a recommendation, um, on any of those variances to the ZBA, if, if they wish. Depending on how the commission feels about that.
I'd ask, do any of the commissioners feel that that should be done? I'm a little bit on the fence here, not knowing much, but, I mean, just this one plan doesn't show me. I think I need to know more about where the garages are. I don't have all that information in front of me tonight. But, uh, I guess I wouldn't want to go much, but I heard one to 1.5 spaces per unit. I wouldn't want to go below 1.5. Would be my, that's just my, uh, my feelings on it at this initial conceptual stage. I would agree with Aaron that the two probably is not necessary. But, uh, I don't know what, what the number, I don't know at this point what the, the number would be. Does anybody other board members feel?
Most, we most certainly do not want to put two per unit in there because we feel that we'd be really, really over parked at that point. Again, so trying to work back to what kind of is, is there today, trying to marry those together is really the, is really what the plan, um, has been.
Dee, this is Sarah Wengert. I, I would just offer, um, and this is anecdotal and based on one visit to the site, which was not very extensive. But I did go to the site at about 6:30 PM on a weekday. And I was surprised to see how many empty parking spaces there were. Just making that one point, uh, it actually struck me. And I saw a decent amount of activity, pedestrian activity around the complex. For what it's worth, I'm just sharing.
To, to that point, Sarah, um, are there pedestrian connections along Colleen Road to Campbell? That's a question for the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I, there's a sidewalk, I believe, on the, um, opposite side of the, of the, the road there. Hold on a second. But internally, um, the, a lot of the pedestrian, um, activity, you know, is on that outer loop that goes around the project site. Yeah, there is a sidewalk.
Okay.
Yep, sorry. Yep, sorry. You guys are watching me Google Earth it here, really apologize.
No, that's okay. Are there, are there any crosswalks? If you could just head up the hill there, are there any crosswalk connections between this development and that sidewalk?
I don't believe so, Aaron.
Okay, because I heard Kevin mentioned that there are, there is some use by the, the adjacent neighborhood of the trail system that's on this property. And if a connection is going to be made to the larger network, it may be worth considering if any connections, pedestrian connections can be made there.
Okay.
At that, at that intersection.
Okay, good point.
Thank you. Also, are there any, is there a bus stop nearby? And if there is, if connections could be provided to, to that stop?
Kevin, I, Aaron, I have to look into the bus stop scenario. Kevin, I don't know.
There are no bus, there are no bus stops. There is, there is no bus that goes up into there other than the Bosse's at the end.
Okay, so the, so the stop is out on Campbell then?
Yes.
Okay, so if a connection, if a pedestrian connection can be made out to Campbell, then that would, I think that would work.
The stop is on the same corner as the sidewalk. Where the sidewalk, because across the street is the parking area for the fire department.
Right, yeah, so I'm just suggesting a, a crosswalk at, at least at one point, maybe, maybe if there's an opportunity to have it at more than one point, you guys have quite a bit of frontage there on Colleen.
It would be up by Belina.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look at it, Aaron, just to see if there's a good spot to put something there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so does anyone have any further comments or questions? No? All right, does anyone want to make a motion or do we want to move on to the next project?
Andy, does a motion to table need to take place here or can? The public hearing for this project was closed, so is the board free to move on?
Yes, you can table it to next month, not a problem.
So I guess the only question I have for you guys is, Andy, if, do I need a referral from, from planning to go to zoning for this, to at least start the application with the zoning board?
No, I, I don't believe so. You're going in for area variances, you've been here this evening. I, I can relate to staff as well as Commissioner Strickman, the planning board had, you know, heard it, had some comments, and now they're awaiting ZBA action.
Okay.
Andy, would it be, would it be possible for, if, if the commission would like, to, to declare themselves lead agency and to ask for a coordinated review on this so that the ZBA does not need to do a separate seeker for this?
Yeah, that's a great idea. I think it'd make it easier for everybody.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So, so DeeDee, you guys could make a motion this evening to declare yourself lead agency for a coordinated review?
This is Sarah Wengert and I make a motion that the planning commission serve as lead agency for seeker and that a coordinated review be undertaken for the project.
This is Anthony, I second.
I'm going to call the role, DeeDee?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
The motion to declare the planning commission lead agency for a coordinated review passed five zero. I, I think there should be a motion to table as well.
This is Sarah Wengert, I make a motion to table discussion on this project.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you everyone.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to our last agenda item of the evening is P L 2004, which is 144th Ninth Street, Site Plan Review and Seeker. I keep, I can hear some backfeed. I don't know if you guys can hear it.
I'm doing the best I can here.
Fine. So proposal is to convert a church into eight apartments. The applicant is, the applicant here tonight?
Yes, the applicant, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, excellent.
Could you please? Yes, we can.
Excellent. This is Luigi Pullessi with ABD Engineers. I'm here on behalf of Neil Kursner, who is the applicant, as well as the applicant's attorney, Mary Beth Levin. We're all on the line here tonight and we're here tonight, as you mentioned, for 144 Ninth Street. The applicant is seeking approval to convert an existing and vacant church into eight-unit apartment complex with a density of 27 tenants and 13 parking spaces. The property is situated within a residential two zoning district. As you see from our site plan, that no major site modifications are proposed. Most of the work is remodeling the interior of the existing building. This past Tuesday, August 18th, the applicant received reapproval of the use variance and area variance as proposed. We also presented this project to this board last month and we discussed a few site plan changes, which we agreed and they were consisting of making repairs to the existing fence during the redevelopment of the entire project and also modifying the ramp along the front on Ninth Street to comply with ADA and New York State Building Codes. As I mentioned, you know, no other major site modifications are made or are proposed and we're hoping, we're here tonight for discussion and possible approval of this application. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
All right, should we open this up for public hearing? Is there a motion to open this, open a public hearing to receive public comments on this project?
Yes, this is Sarah Wengert and I make a motion to open this hearing for public comment.
This is Anthony, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is open?
So again, I would ask if anybody from the public is here tonight to make comments, raise your hand and I'll turn it over to you to let me know.
Okay. I'm going to call on Amy first, if you could state your, your full name and address for the record, please.
My name is Amy Halloran, 221 Tenth Street.
Amy, can you spell your last name?
H A L L O R A N.
And your address one more time, please?
221 Tenth Street, it's adjacent to the property.
Thank you.
I have a letter that's been signed by a number of people in the neighborhood and the city, so I'm speaking on behalf of quite a few people who I will list at the end. Some of them are here in the room. We, the neighbors of the Armenian Church, have been concerned about this proposal since it materialized. We are zoned R2, two-family residential, meaning only one and two family residences are allowed, so to have a dormitory-style apartment building situated in our neighborhood is less than ideal. We regret the ZBA's decision, which was controversial and which we contested because of the negative impact of cars, traffic, and likely student lifestyle habits that will come with allowing this variance. In order to mitigate these considerable interruptions to the character of this neighborhood, we came up with a few suggestions. First, signage on sidewalks and striping on the street for suggested parking spaces will ameliorate the influx of vehicles. Painting the street with specific parking spots and having signs to keep cars from blocking visibility at corners are steps that will protect walkers. There is no stoplight at either intersection on this site and only stop signs for the north-south traffic on Ninth and Tenth, so the developers should be responsible for inviting a safer environment for the many pedestrians who use this area. As many as 27 cars could come with 27 new residents. We ask you please to help cushion the danger of that many more cars here by planning for parking and walking issues that will arise. Second, we'd like to see the sidewalk replaced around the site and decent-sized tree trees shading and greeting our new sidewalks. Installation of pedestrian-level lighting to replace existing streetlights will be a general improvement and safety measure for everyone who walks here too. Repaving the parking areas with forest pavement to lessen the amount of runoff would be an environmentally sensitive upgrade. And using deflection guards to keep parking lot and other lighting from shining in neighbors' windows is requested. Last, but not at all least, we propose a garden in the upper lot on the corner of Tenth and Eagle Streets. The Armenian Church was a quasi-public space and is now being converted to a private space. A garden can soften the impact of this new style and scale of housing on our neighborhood. A garden space is the bridge between the old function of this property and the new one, and there are examples of similar gardens elsewhere, like Leslie's Garden at the school ten apartments in South Troy. A garden will invite the new residents and the existing community to enjoy nature together and to maintain the quasi-public aspect of the church space. Without such an opportunity, it is unlikely that the students and community members will have any reason to connect with each other, which has been a big part of our concern. A garden would bridge the worlds that this apartment building is bringing together. A garden could be planted with apricot, cherry, and plum trees, fruits that reflect the Armenian heritage of this site and of our neighborhood. A garden would also be a nod to the memory of Chico Christopher, an architect with Trap, with TAP, Troy Architectural Projects, and board member of Capital Roots. Chico lived beside the church for decades and this would be a lovely way to remember him and his love for people and for plants. Signed, Amy Halloran, Felix and Jack McGuy, 221 Tenth Street, Beth Steckley and Mary Corrigan, 115 Ninth Street, Emily Luddy, 45 Eagle Street, Joshua Childs, 2221 Thirteenth Street, Ellie Irons, 143 Ninth Street, Dan Pfeifer, 143 Ninth Street, Maura Marks, 28 Eagle Street, Lisa Rodriguez, 15th Street, Kira and Lola Garig and Justin Baker, 115 Eleventh Street, Amy Klein, Director of Capital Roots, Barb Nelson, Director of TAP, and Jesse Marshall, 221 Tenth Street. Lastly, I want to say that we were not aware that this proposal came to this planning commission prior, so I'm very nervous to hear that things could be passed tonight because the neighbors who have, you know, we've gone to court over this because our neighborhood matters an awful lot. I've lived here for 20 years and my investment and my neighbor's investment matters as much as some person from New York City who wants to make a ton of money but doesn't really want to improve the quality of life. So I do hope that you will think about the people who live here.
Thank, thank you, Amy. I, I just sent you a, a chat message with my email address. Could you please email that letter and I will include that as part of the meeting minutes? Thank you.
Yep.
I, I would also like to say that this is the first meeting that this application has been heard. It, it was scheduled at last month's meeting, however, it was scheduled in error as an extension. And upon further investigation, we realized it, it, it had never been approved and could not be extended. And so this is the first full site plan review meeting for, for this proposal.
Right, but the lawyer said they had changed some elements and they hoped for passage, so that doesn't sound very, doesn't sound procedural.
Thank you. Dan Pfeifer, I see your hand is raised?
Hi, yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. I, I just want to voice my support for Amy's letter, which my, myself and my wife Ellie signed on to. My, my address for the record is 143 Ninth Street, so I live right across the street from the church. And I'm still uncertain about what exactly this will mean for our family. I, I spend a lot of time on the sidewalk with our 18-month daughter, 18-month-old daughter. So I, I spend a lot of time in the neighborhood, walking, and I think this will significantly change the, the character of the neighborhood. I know that, that phrase gets used a lot, but I, I do think personally, I'm going to experience that to a great extent, thinking about the, the number of new cars and, and additional density. But in general, I just want to add my support to what Amy already said. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Okay, DeeDee, I, I don't see anyone else's hands up. I believe, I believe that's all we have.
All right. Thank you so much.
I will, I will just, just to remind the commission that if, if they'd like, I can, I can go through the, the, the variances, if you'll allow me a, just a second to pull them up. I can go through the variances that were granted by the, the ZBA?
Please do.
Yes, please, thank you.
Should have pulled that up before I said that, but just bear with me a moment. Okay, at this month's meeting, these variances were reaffirmed on, on a Tuesday night's meeting. A use variance, which of course allows for the multifamily use within the R2 zone. And then area variances for lot deficiency, lot area deficiency, and excessive density. And this is for a, a total of eight apartments, so eight units, with a total of 27 bedrooms and 13 parking spaces provided, which while not listed, I believe the parking variance was also granted. which, while not listed, I believe the parking variance was also granted. So Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the discussion then should not necessarily be related to the use of the property or the density or the lack of parking, as those are now by right, but how to mitigate those items.
And that's correct. Since the variances were granted, the use is now permitted with those deficiencies. So it's not as of by right, but it is by variance. So lack of parking isn't something this board can consider. Whether or not it's the appropriate use on this neighborhood, on this corner, isn't something this board can consider. They need to review the site plan with those variances in place.
Okay, we still have the public hearing open. We should make a motion to close the public hearing tonight. Is there a motion?
Yes, this is Sarah Wengert. I make a motion to close the public hearing project.
Is there a second?
Sorry to butt in, but I believe we have a new member of the public who wishes to speak. I don't want to be presumptuous, but I believe this is Amy's husband, so go ahead.
Thanks for recognizing me. Hello, my name is Jack McGee. I also reside at 221 Tenth Street. And I've been close, trying to work with the people from the church as they've been struggling to find a better use for the church once their congregation dwindled as it had. So I just wanted to say that I wasn't responsible for any of the writing beforehand, but I certainly support what Amy... I'm one of the signatories to Amy's letter. And my greatest concern is that this, the character of this neighborhood... I understand the character of the neighborhood question is the zoning question, but we're trying to address, trying to prevent an insular quality of a large group of people of a particular class and age from living together to get in one building, from having sort of a separation from the rest of the neighborhood. The nice thing about the neighborhood, as I experience it, is that we have renters, we have owners, we have older people of different races, and we have younger people who have moved in with children and so forth. And it's quite mixed, and there's a lot of interchange between people. My concern is that 27 bedrooms in one building will have an insular quality, and there won't be a lot of mixing of those people. So the really salient quality, the salient feature of Amy's letter is the proposal to have a common space. The request to have the common space, which is, as I understand from the plans that I've seen, this open space uphill of the building is not... There's really no plan so far that I've seen for its use. So the proposal to use it as a garden, as a meeting space, as a common area might go some distance towards ameliorating these divisions that we anticipate between the student population or the population within the building and the rest of the neighborhood. So I just wanted to really say that that makes a lot of sense to me. And I hope that you will ask the applicant to work with us in developing some proposal for that space. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. DeeDee, I believe somebody else joined. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, I think that's it.
Okay, well, there'd be nobody else now. Sarah made the motion. I believe it was not seconded. Is that correct, Erin?
I'll second it.
That, yes, that was correct. Suzanne seconds.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The motion to close the public hearing passes 5-0.
Okay, at this time, I'd ask if any of the board members have questions, comments?
I've got a comment. I'm looking at the floor plan. It looks like a 19th-century tenement plan from the Lower East Side. I have never seen so much density in a small space since looking at plans of 19th-century tenements. I don't understand how that many people can be crammed into that space.
So, hi, everybody. The structure is over 8,000 square feet. I think it's plenty large to support that number of residents.
Well, I drove up there and looked at it. And yeah, it's a decent-sized building, but I still... I'm sorry, I just don't see it.
There are levels. Maybe that wasn't apparent. And in the front of the building, there are actually two levels. There's one apartment that goes up on the second floor, and in the back of the building, there are two levels. So perhaps it's deceivingly small, but the person is well within reason.
Neil, was that 8,000 square feet, did you say? That's total square?
It's approximate. It's approximate. I don't have the exact number in front of me.
But that's floor area, not the area of the building?
It's floor area, correct. No, I think, no, I'd correct that. That's footprint of the building.
Okay, so how many floors is the building?
Well, it's, in parts, it's two stories.
Okay.
In the sanctuary, most of the sanctuary is one story, with the exception of the front, which is two stories. And there was an addition in the back that is two stories.
This is Mary Beth Slevin, counsel for the applicant. I just want to reiterate something that Amy said earlier. The density for the project has in fact been approved by the ZBA already. So it's not really an issue before the planning. We understand that it has implications for the larger project, but I do want to make sure that we stay focused on what the issues are before the commission.
This is Barbara. First of all, Neil, did you identify yourself when you spoke?
I'm sorry, I did not. This is Neil Bersner. I'm one of the developers on the project.
And your address?
Is 11 Sycamore Lane in White Plains.
Okay. I guess my question is to the neighbors. You've presented a letter that, I can't remember all the elements to it, but are you saying that if the garden was done, that would satisfy you? Or is that what you're looking for, that we... That a requirement? It's a question for tonight. As far as I can tell, it's the first time, I think it's the first time it's come to me at the board. Is that correct, Erin?
The question is, is this the first we've seen this project? Yes, yes.
Okay.
It was... Again, it was on the agenda last month. Through a scheduling mistake, it was scheduled for both the ZBA and the planning commission as an extension. However, it was actually only an extension for the ZBA. And because it was advertised that way, the board acted in a manner as though it were an extension. In fact, it was not. And so this is the first public hearing for the full application.
And I guess the other... So the question's then, thank you. Is this something that needs seeker from the planning commission?
Absolutely. While the use is allowed through the variance, it is still a change of use. And so this would be considered an unlisted action under seeker. The ZBA, through their process, did their own seeker review, and they approved that. So this does not need to be a coordinated review. There's no other... It's my understanding, and Luigi, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe there's any other agencies that the applicant needs approval from. This is the last of the approvals they would need before construction.
Well, then, again, so planning does or does not do a seeker review?
Planning does do a seeker review. This is an unlisted action.
And we have not yet done that?
That's correct.
Because we have not seen it before. Okay. And then the other question was, again, back to the neighbors. If what you're asking is for us to require this concept, which I understand the general gist of it, but is that what you're asking? Oh, I don't know. Shall I say that to the board and the board would ask that?
Yeah, the public hearing is closed. The comments were that... Let me see, I have the letter, and it's part of the record as it was read. So bear with me as I open that. Here, I can make this actually available, I believe, too, by sharing.
Okay. Well, while you're doing that, I guess I'm not ready to move forward on anything since it's our first time here. And so I just have to table it for now.
Okay, well, the board can make a motion to be lead agent for seeker review.
Erin, I don't think we've received any of the seeker documentation, though, have we?
If it was not in the packet...
It was all submitted with the application.
Yeah, I believe it was submitted. If it was not included in your packet, I can make that available, the information available.
No, actually, I just, I did find it.
It doesn't mean you have to make a secret determination this evening. In fact, you know, the board may want to do some further review, but a seeker form was submitted.
Yeah, I'd like to see, because I know, Luigi, you talked about some improvements that you were proposing to do in terms of the fencing and the ramp, but I don't see that on the site plan. So I'd like to see on a site plan exactly what it is you're proposing to do. I'd also like to recommend that the planning commission have a third-party review of the project. If a new site plan could be submitted. And then, if a new site plan with all the proposed improvements that you are proposing shown clearly on it, because it's not shown now, be submitted to the planning commission, and then that the planning commission get a third-party engineering review of that. And if we could do that, depending on when you submit it.
DeeDee, did I hear that the commission is requesting a third-party review?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm recommending.
Okay, I can work with the applicant. If the applicant would reach out to my office to coordinate that, we will get an escrow set up to have that review performed.
Erin, DeeDee, may I ask, this is Sarah. May I ask, what is the content that would be reviewed by this third party? What is the scope of that review?
So that's typically left up to my office to determine. But I can, if there's anything specific that the planning commission would like to have reviewed, I will make note of that and make sure that that's included. Generally speaking, it would be all of the documentation that was submitted to the planning commission. So that would include the site plan, grading, utilities, traffic flow, very similar to the letter that was prepared for King's Landing earlier this evening. It would not include more subjective comments, such as what to be done with the green area that's available on the site or things of that nature. It would be much more utilitarian.
DeeDee, may I continue with some comments that I have for the applicant?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And though I may be reading some of the things that were included in the letter, I will do so. I spent some time at the site, obviously, just on the exterior of the building. And there were a few key things that struck me first. It is my opinion that the parking lot warrants replacement. There is a lot of grass and weeds growing through the parking lot. The surfacing is poor, and the entrance to the parking lot is a slope that is likely to harm cars and make loud noise constantly. I don't know if that's subjective or not, but I crept out of that parking lot. I cannot speak directly to the lot lighting, but agree that there should be safe lighting that has cutoffs. I would suggest that much of the part of the sidewalks indeed be replaced. And I would highly recommend that all of the chain-link fencing, as it is today, be removed. It is in poor condition. All of the weed growth be removed and maintained has removed. And if there shall be additional fencing to replace the removed chain-link, that fence design be part of the submission. And I would support this concept of a garden wholeheartedly. That lot is begging for such an amenity. And I think that it could do great things to bring the community together. This is a quirky, unique neighborhood, and that garden would just be perfect for it, chickens and all. And my question would be, how does that garden get implemented? Could it be implemented as a cooperative between the building owner, Community Gardens, and the neighbors? And that's a question/recommendation. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Sarah, just to clarify, are you asking that the applicant reach out to Community Gardens?
I would highly recommend it.
Okay.
They know how to do it, so...
And then we have talked... And then we have talked about the site plan, but I'm curious, I didn't hear about any exterior building improvements in terms of any work that you're proposing to do on the building exterior. Is there any? And if so, what? I didn't see that in the application.
This is Luigi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So there, there are no improvements to the exterior of the building? Most, like I said before, most of the improvements will be done inside. And obviously, you know, any exterior improvements would be like we talked about, some fencing, the ADA ramping up to the front door of the building, and, you know, resurfacing of the parking lot. I, since I got the floor here, I'd like to speak a little bit about the lighting. We weren't proposing any, any lighting, lighting as is right now. There, there would be building mounted lights, but they would all be down type. We want to keep the lighting at a minimum. And then as far as the community garden, we, that is not a good idea to have it community. We can certainly incorporate a couple fruit trees and a picnic area, but we do not want to invite the public, because that's, that's a huge risk on the, the owner. And he's not willing to take that risk. So we can certainly provide it for the residents for the project, but not the neighbors.
I have another question. Are you planning on replacing any of the windows?
Neil, do you know that question?
Yes, most, most of the windows will be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
And I should add, in terms of the green area.
I didn't see, I guess that's what I was asking. There, so are the, the windows are being replaced? I assume the gutters that are falling off the back, or something's gonna, none of that, like, how are you going to get to apartment seven?
Through a, I believe it's on the plan, through a pathway in the back.
So it's currently a window.
There's, there'll be a new sidewalk and pathway.
So again, that needs to be shown on the site plan. There's nothing shown on the site plan, and when I just asked what exterior improvements were being made, I was told none. So if there's a, if there's a path, we need to know what it is, what the material is, what the size is. We need to know where it leads from, where it goes to. How do you get to apartment eight? All these things need to be shown on the site plan. So another question that was just brought up was the wind, most of the window being replaced. Does that include the stained glass?
Yes, it does. Windows, as they currently are, are leaking, both water and air. They all, they all need to be replaced. Several are broken.
So I would like to see a site plan prepared that shows all the exterior improvements that will be, you are proposing to do.
And DeeDee, this is Sarah, I would also suggest that if there are window replacements, and they're selective, all of the building elevation should indicate windows are being replaced, and with what?
Could I, could I make a couple of suggestions as well?
Please.
The, the parking, the, the length of the parking stalls is not mentioned. I, I believe that's likely because they appear deficient, and they are not nine feet by 18, as required by code. I would also suggest, given the extent of the work that's being proposed, that the curb cut be brought up to standard and be widened, as it appears as though it's less than 20 feet, which is substandard. I, I would suggest making it slightly wider than that as well, but, but 20 feet is the minimum. And then the accessible parking space. I, I, I don't see enough grading and enough spot elevations to demonstrate that, that parking space and the accessibility route meet code. The, the landing that's shown into the building that the ramp leads to appears to be undersized as well. It's hard to tell without the, the dimensions there. So I would, I'd like that to be looked at. Again, if, if, if third-party review is going to be taking place, some of these comments may end up being repetitive, but those are items I see.
Yeah, and the only other item I would add to that, there's the retaining wall and the stairs leading up side of the apartment, to the semi-apartment.
I'd also add a ADA curb ramp on the corner there. You're gonna have the accessible parking space. That person's only gonna be able to get out of there using their car.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's breaking up. I didn't hear who was talking.
That was, that was James suggesting, I think, a curb, a curb ramp, but I was, I was unclear, James, where you were, where you were talking about there? We might have lost James there.
These are all things that should be shown properly on the site plan, and then resubmitted and then reviewed.
Yeah, my, what, this is what I would, I would suggest is, I can, I can summarize the comments that we've received from the public this evening and from the, the commission, and provide the third-party engineer with those comments as well. Have them review, I suppose, I suppose if you'd like to review, to revise the plans prior to me sending them out for review, that, that's, Luigi, if that's something that you'd like to do. They're going to, to review a, a more complete package that has a separate site plan, utility plan, grading plan. If there's existing lighting, that should be shown on its own plan with light level shown. And when you get that package together, I will, I can pass on the comments that we've received this evening and those plans, and have them review a complete package.
And I think we'd also like to see where the garbage is going to be gone, where it's going to be stored.
Um, and, and I know we're throwing a lot at you. I'm, I'm taking notes and I will pass this stuff on. The dumpster location. The, the other item is, I, I had sent this plan over to Chris Whalen at DPU. And given the, the, the amount of bedrooms that are being created, they would like to review this project as it contributes to a combined sewer.
If I could respond to that, as we know, this was a, a previous church that had many more members than what you, what we're proposing now. So as far as utilities go, the proposed utilities usage is going to be far less than, you know, the, the members when it was a, an Albanian church. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
I think it was an Armenian church, but the, the, what size was the congregation? Does anyone know? Any member of the public, can they chime in with how large the congregation? Okay, so 150 times five, 750 gallons a day. I, I would wager that at 27 bedrooms, you guys are going to be up at 2,700 gallons a day. That's a sewer extension territory. So we're gonna have DPU review that. All right? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna argue with having the department review anything. You know, we can certainly work the numbers out with DPU.
Okay. Would you agree that, that 27 bedrooms contributes more to the sewer than 150-seat church?
Well, I'm gonna have to verify the number of members that were there, because it could be 200. I'm not sure. So we'll, we'll look at the numbers. We could put a summary together in regards to that.
Okay, thank you. One last item. As this is a new application, we do have a standard site plan application form. I spoke planning, Planning Commission review form. If that could be filled out and submitted, some of the questions that we've had this evening would be answered on that form. If you could include that with your next submission.
Okay, so do any other board members have any questions or comments tonight? All right, so we are not taking action on this tonight. So do we?
You do have the ability to declare lead agency pursuant to seeker this evening.
What? All right, would somebody like to declare a lead agency? I haven't. Is, we submitted a short form. Now, do I hear a motion to declare a lead agency?
Yes, this is Sarah Wengert, and I make a motion that the Planning Commission shall serve as lead agency for seeker.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Sarah.
I'll second it.
Suzanne seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The Planning Commission is lead agency for seeker review?
Okay, so Andy, do we, do we table this, or what, what's the procedure? What do we?
Yeah, motion to table the next meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought. So is there a motion to table this application until the next Planning Commission meeting?
I'll do it. I move that we table the meeting, or the motion till the next meeting.
Suzanne makes a motion to table until the next meeting. Do we have a second?
I second. Barb?
Barbara Higbee seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Unless there's any other business in front of the, the Planning Commission this evening, we would need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. This is Anthony.
A second, this is Sarah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.